All right. It's 12:23. I'm gonna call the town council work session for Tuesday, October 8th to order. We're gonna start for a little bit, we're just now starting because we have lunch first, so you haven't missed anything if you're online. And we are gonna start with Shannon to give a little, a couple of things before we get into the budget, so.
Yeah, thank you. So I just wanted to, oh, I'm sorry, gonna kick this off. I know this is always a long day. As we get started with a riveting four-ish hours of budget discussion. I wanted to take a minute to give kudos to Dave and Tracy. They put in many, many hours into putting this budget together and a lot of thoughtful conversation happened to give you the document that you have here today. I did hear from at least one council member who said that the budget preparation and presentation gets better every year. And I have to agree, I think Dave and Tracy have done a lot to kind of elevate the budget document so that maybe there's less conversation that needs to take place, more information included in there and information for the public, so they have more of an idea of what they're looking at when they look at the budget. And then for you all, a lot, a lot of the heavy lifting has already been done with your CIP discussion and the five-year forecast review that you all did in September. So today, Dave and Tracy are gonna lead you through a review of all the funds. We always go from Fund 20, which is the last fund down to Fund One or up to Fund One, which is a general fund. And a lot of times we either run out of time or council runs out of energy for that discussion, so we're hoping today that we have enough time to at least give you an opportunity to hear from senior leadership on some of the highlights of their budgets and ask any questions you might have about operational expenses. So with that, I will hand it over to Dave and Tracy. Kelly, unless you had anything you wanted to add?
No, that sounds great, and I definitely echo the sentiments of this is the best packet, budget packet that we've had, so thank you for all the work. You okay? You okay out there?
Can't see close.
It's Dave's first day with readers.
Oh, bear with him.
City market special. Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Are we, we're?
Yep, we're good. Thank you very much.
Marika is online and Carol will be here shortly.
So as we did and as Shannon mentioned in similar times, we have a, just a agenda that we're gonna go through. I think we're gonna try to wrap it up by 4:30, Shannon, today. So, and we'll squeeze a break in probably during the middle of it. Basically, on the agenda, we're gonna have Tracy walk through kind of the structure of kind of how we're set up with our 20 funds for the town. And then our assumptions for the 25 budget. And then we'll go through the, each fund, we'll go through highlights of what's going on within the fund, any fees if applicable. And then if there's a capital plan, we'll have that behind it, and then the FTE headcount as well. And then they'll all roll up to our town summary and our FTE headcount summary. And then we'll squeeze a break in either before or in the middle of that, depending on how things shake out. And then we'll go into five-year assumptions and go from there, which we might not spend as much time on because we did quite a bit of that a few weeks ago. So with that being said, I'm gonna kick it off to Tracy.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Dave, can you move forward to the next slide?
Oh, sorry.
Just level set with some kind of high-level information, just to talk about the different funds, just so that for those who don't maybe recognize the different setups that we have, just want to talk about that. So you'll see that we have 20 funds broken down between the governmental funds and proprietary. So these are managed through different accounting rules that are then blended together for when we publish our accredited comprehensive financial statements. When we look at the governmental funds, you'll see that there's really two different streams. We have the government funds and the special revenue ones. The special revenue ones, we actually can't really touch these funds in the, in those unless they are for very specific reasons. When we look at the proprietary, the ones under enterprise, those manage more like a business and are meant to be sustainable from a financial position, and their revenue is primarily fee-based. Internal services, those are funds that really support the operations of the towns, and they get their funding from either an allocation from other departments or are funded directly from the Excise Fund. We will be talking a little bit about reserves and restrictions, so I just wanted to talk about the difference of what those mean. Think of each fund as a checking account. And when we say that something is restricted, we don't actually do anything to that checking account. We just kind of say, we're gonna restrict some of our money in our checking account. We're not gonna spend it because we're gonna hold it there for X reason. Now with a reserve, we actually do something. So think of it as your checking account. If we're gonna reserve something, we're gonna take the money out of that checking account, and we're gonna put it into a savings account, and that savings account is titled specifically for that purpose. So we're not gonna touch it. So if you think of it personally, you've got your savings account, you've got that for your travel fund, maybe, and you're gonna keep that reserve for when you book your flights, and you're gonna use that savings account to pay for your travel. That would be a reserve. A restriction is just where you're going, I'm gonna keep the money in my checking account. I'm not gonna move it, but I'm gonna keep a note. I'm not gonna spend it because I wanna spend that when I want to go book my airfare. Really the difference between it. One has an accounting adjustment, one is just a heads-up, keep a note of it. Moving on to the assumptions. Right, so this part of the budget presentation, we're just gonna talk about this upcoming budget year, specifically 2025. Couple of things we want to call out for the revenue. You'll notice throughout the different funds that we have sales tax and the real estate transfer tax is flat this year to the 2024 budget. We do have an 8% reduction to the accommodation tax to the 2024 budget, and that's based on that amount of rooms that we expect to, to see revenue coming in for 25. We have a 35% reduction from marijuana tax to the 2024 budget. We did feel that the 2024 budget was quite aggressive, so we scaled that back, and we'll talk a little bit more once we get to the marijuana fund. The property taxes are based upon the updated assessed valuation from the mill levy. You'll see that there's a new revenue stream, and this is for our new docking permit, and that's gonna benefit the sustainability fund specifically for the e-delivery project, and we'll talk a little bit more once we get to sustainability. There are very minor fee changes for this budget, upcoming budget year, a couple of within the recreation categories, which falls under the general fund. You'll see that there is a 10% increase to our water rents, and that benefits the utility fund. And then there's a, some minor fee changes in comm dev and just a minor fee change in parking as well. You will notice a 2%, sorry, $2 million reduction in investment income. We did very well over the last couple of years, specifically this year, but we do expect to see a reduction in interest rates over the next few years. So we'll talk a little bit about that, really more in the, in the five-year forecast. You'll see that getting slightly diminished each year. Moving on to personnel, we have built in a 4.5% merit average increase, and that merit is rolled out based on the anniversary date, and we do have that built into the projections. There is no increase to our healthcare benefit allocation that remains at 17,500 per employee. There is an overall healthcare cost of 200,000 that you'll see in the healthcare benefit fund, but that is based on the increase in number of full-time equivalent. And we are basing our budget for personnel that we are 100% staff on January 1st. We have, we are continuing on with the FTE for the Summit County Housing Authority, and that was primarily for Cory's role. We are continuing to see that as an expense within the, within the fund, but that is offset by revenue reimbursement, and we'll talk a little bit more about that once we get to that fund. And overall, at just a high level, there is an increase of about 7.5 part-time, full-time heads. And it's made up of the, primarily the, the roles listed beneath that. There are small changes that impact different funds as well, and we'll talk a little bit more about those as we get to each fund, but this is really like the high-level main roles that have been increased to the budget for next year. And then you'll see the retiring town manager of Rick will be rolling off. Expenses, we haven't had any changes outside of inflation that we have built into those standard purchasing assumptions. And outside of the CIP, there is no other major capital purchases outside of the ones that we've already reviewed and adjusted for, and we'll talk about those. We have not taken on any new debt for our capital projects, and we do not plan to do so next year. And there is a change in our allocation logic for how we fund garage and facilities fund. In the past, we would really consider the usage by each department for those two areas and equate out a cost of what the future replacement is or maintenance of those items and allocate that cost to each department. We have changed that for 2025. Instead of using each department to fund, we will be taking those funds directly from the Excise Fund to keep garage and facilities afloat, and we'll continue to keep a, a healthy balance in there for whatever those projects that are coming up or those CIPs, and we'll, we'll be going through their CIPs too. For restrictions, so keep in mind restrictions are just things that we keep note of in our head. We do keep two years of debt payments as a restricted. We also restrict for three years of our capital improvement plan, our CIP. We also restrict for four months of our general fund operating expenses. And then we also restrict and our value of our fixed assets, our notes payable and our housing loans. And if you have any questions at any point, please feel free to ask as we go along. Don't feel free to wait until the end.
And one other change we're doing on allocations is we are charging the different town departments for water. Paid in the past. We don't have that listed here, but that's a change we're making in 25 to really get the utility fund what they should be getting back for using water.
I think I know the answer to this, but under personnel, we're assuming full staffing, one, 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 25, not 24.
Yeah, it should be 25, thank you.
And some organizations build in a vacancy rate. We tend not to do that, but the odds of us being fully staffed January 1st is not gonna really probably happen. But you could probably go during a year, maybe be in a quarter or now probably three months of of the staffing increase to seeing what would be understaffed for that particular time period, so. But we tend to not do that here for the town. Just leave it starting January 1st, fully staffed.
Okay, I do want to just speak quickly about the different account classifications because you'll see this as a heading under each fund. Under expenses, it's really broken down into these nine different classes, and each one has a very specific meaning and how we also account for it within gap of our modified gap standard procedures. Each one has a kind of a title above it, so you'll see it broken down into, we have personnel followed by materials and supplies, and that's really gonna be everything that each department would use to kind of operate their department or their program. Charges for services, that is where we pay somebody else to perform a task or item of work for the town. Minor capital is gonna be any purchase that we will then capitalize and make adjustments at the year-end, place on the ballot sheet. And then we then book the depreciable expense at the, in the future periods. Fixed charges, that's really where we, where we're gonna record our rental, our depreciation, our insurance costs. Debt is, we record all of our principal and interest for any of our debts, debt charges to that one. Grants is specifically for grants and scholarships, and we want to call that out so it's easier to then look at it year over year for comparison. Allocations and transfers really net to revenue. So as we allocate funds from different departments, you're gonna see it as a revenue line above, and then the same for transfers. So it's always gonna net to zero. So when we look at our summaries of the whole roll-up, we will look at it as with transfers, and then we also take out the transfers to look at it net. So you've got a cleaner representation of truly what is our revenue and expenses. Okay, so moving on to the first fund, that will be the accommodation unit compliance. For revenue, the accommodation regulatory fee. So we feel that 2024 was projected a little light to budget for the projection. So you'll see that budget was 7.2 million. We've taken down the projection to 7.1. And then we're seeing this trend down in 2025 is what we're proposing, so we've dropped that a little more. When we look at the number of properties that we sell, we expect those short-term rental licenses not to renew. So we looked at 2024, and that number was based on 9,596 rooms. And we anticipate in 2025 to be down to 9,259 rooms. So that would be a, a loss approximately of about 130 licenses. So that's why we are bringing that number down. It's about 3.5% reduction is what we plan in 2025. The major expense in this fund is a transfer over to our workforce housing fund. And we really try to take as much of the, the full balance in this fund over to that. We do leave just a little amount that we will restrict that you'll see below as a restriction for short-term rental fees, but ultimately, we just wanna to make sure the fund stays positive above $1. We just leave a little bit in there, but we restrict that because ultimately that will be going over to housing. The other expense that we see in this fund is the allocation of 1,698, and that is primarily for IT. We charge the, the full cost of the MuniRev software to IT who pay for that, but that is a transfer to fund for that software. There have been no changes in our compliance fees for this fund. All right, sustainability. Couple of new programs or departments were introduced into the sustainability fund. The first one is Department 106, which is the e-delivery program. And the second one is Department 84, 8040, which is for BRIC e-Ride. So talking a little bit about BRIC e-Ride, you'll see that there is revenue of 35,000 that's called out under cost sharing. So this is for the, obviously, the revenue for the, the BRIC e-Ride. You'll see that that is offset by the contracted expense for this program, which we anticipate to be around about 440,000 the next year. We're also proposing a new revenue stream for the docking permits for this. We do expect or anticipate revenue in Q4 of next year. We're anticipating and hoping for 375,000, and that's part of this new program, the 106 program. And beyond 2025, you'll see in the five-year, we've got anticipated revenue of about 625,000 for each year. There is a grant revenue of 208,000, and that is for the solar panels that are gonna be going on top of the new FERC building. And that is two grants that we're getting. The first one is for DOLA, and the other one is from the FERC.
So just to clarify on that, that is the grant that we applied for to get solar panels on that building, and it required matching funds. So out of the money that you already provided to FERC, they're gonna give a portion of that back to us, and that will equate to the matching funds that are required for the grant.
And then we'll bill FERC for the other amount in 2025 to pay us back.
That it, that, yeah, that's the amount.
Tracy, can I interrupt on a couple of questions on the revenue side? I know in the e-bike season pass and rides, there's no proposed revenue for 25? I was just wondering if that was.
Schedule itself.
Yeah, I think it's actually just a GL change. So this year, we had an e-bike season pass line item. And you'll see the projection for '24 comes in at 30K. But, but in '25, we've renamed it as part of that cost-sharing piece she just talked about.
Okay. Somewhere else. And then on the docking permits for '25 of 375K, is, is that an annual?
We, we have 625,000 built in annually going forward for this program. This is really the fourth quarter. Are you gonna?
Jessie, talk just a little bit about what the plan is for that.
So as you all know, we're in phase, we haven't even launched the phase one of the actual delivery piece. But our model has been based on the Town of Vail's experience, and so the way that they collect revenue for this program is based on a dock permit fee where they take into consideration things like time saved for the driver, reduced number of delivery stops, size of the truck, et cetera, and they calculate a dock permit fee based on that number. So this is, this is a placeholder because the later that our, our pilot doesn't launch, the later that will be coming up with this model, but essentially, this is based on assumptions from the Town of Vail and the types of distributors that they see over there and the, and the parameters that I just described. So we're hoping to get to 375,000 within Phase 2.5, if you will. But really, we, we will be coming back to the town council to discuss a proposed methodology for how we collect that revenue. But this is based entirely on assumptions from the Town of Vail at this time.
So if that is, let's just say that 375 for 2025 is overly ambitious. Do we have to come, do you have to come back for appropriation to reduce revenue, anticipated revenue?
We only do appropriations for expense. However, if we are coming back with an appropriation for other reasons, we'll do revenue at the same time.
We've budgeted for the full expense, so that's already in there.
And I, and I get that, I guess. I just, it, it, I would be shocked if we were able to recover.
It is likely that we will come in under that number in Q4 and 2025.
We did keep that in mind. When we looked at the fund balance, we left the fund balance a little higher in this fund than we would traditionally keep it. We usually try and keep it right around that million. We let it get up to 1.9 with the transfer, considering that there would be potential risk with that 375, so we wanted to make sure we had the funds available.
And I believe I read somewhere the assumption going forward is that we'll recover 50% of our expense.
That's in the five-year, beyond '25, yeah.
You feel like that's achievable, Jessie?
You know, I, I don't know the answer to that yet. We don't have, because we have not started this, we do not have the information to be able to put that together. We do, again, we do know what Vail is able to collect in their program, so that, again, it's based on those numbers.
And we should point out that Vail is also a mandatory program, and ours is currently a voluntary program, so I think there'll be a lot of factors to take into consideration.
I'm curious, what's in the 478 for the e-Ride, 478K on the expense side?
So that includes the operating contract with Drop Mobility for, well, they, they are doing work for us year-round, but, you know, April to October. It is for, Teddy's gonna come back at the next meeting and propose some additional hubs and bikes, which is part of that expense as well. And we haven't paid that in its entirety because we've had a grant from CDOT in the past, and that grant is now expiring. And so we're out there looking for other grant funds to help backstop that amount.
Cool, and remind me, ballpark, how many rides do we have this summer? Who's it?
Oh, my gosh, we're over 30,000.
Cool, great, awesome. Love the program. Just curious what was going on there. Thanks.
Any other questions for sustainability? Thank you.
There is a 4 million transfer from the Excise Fund into this, and you'll see that we're gonna be closing out, we're believing the fund balance will close out just shy of 2 million at the end of 2025, which is a little higher than what we traditionally would keep in this one, but we have that little bit of risk in the revenue, and you'll see over the five-year one, it, it drops down to about, around about that 800,000. Within the expenses, we have noted in there 1.25 million for the projected expense for the contractors 106 West for piloting the e-delivery program. And there is a transfer of $133,000 going over to the facilities fund, and that's for, specifically for the efficiency and electrification project. And facilities will then have a total of 500,000 in there to complete that project. The, there is a new schedule following this for the sustainability fees, and if you have any questions, then I'm sure Jessie can speak about that.
I think you reviewed those at the last meeting or the meeting before.
Okay, moving on to the healthcare plan fund. The primary revenue for this is the employee-paid premium, so that is where each employee decides or makes a personal selection on their different benefit programs that the town offers. And based on that selection, those costs are deducted from payroll check and recorded as revenue into this fund. When we look at the change in headcount, in 2023, we had 214.7 full-time heads equivalent. 24 jumped up by about 3.5 to 218.3, and in 2025, we predict FTEs at 225. So that is why when you look at the expense going from the budget of 5.2 of this year to 5.4 of next year, that is primarily because of the additional headcount that we have.
And just a reminder that, you know, our expenses can fluctuate, especially based on high-dollar claims and stop-loss reimbursements and things like that, but so far to date, we're looking really favorable for 2024, so that will help us build up that fund a little bit for years that don't go so well.
Basically, we're not, outside of grow additional staff, we're not anticipating an increase in our healthcare cost in '25, which is pretty remarkable when you look at it. That's from our consultant we used.
All those people getting their knees replaced.
You don't want me driving. Can't see.
Moving on to parking and transportation. The, one of the main revenues we have here is the lift ticket. You'll see there is a budget revenue of just shy of 6 million. This lift ticket is really based on the Vail Agreement, which has a CPI cap. So what we actually do is that we look at the CPI change specifically for the Denver-Aurora-Lakewood region, which right now was at 5.215% CPI change. But there is a cap with the agreement that we have with Vail at 4%. So we take the base amount of, from the prior year of 2023, 2024, we apply that 4% cap. That brings it up, sorry, that brings it up to the 4.3, not the 5.9, 4.3 million. For parking management, the 2024 projection is really more. For parking management, the 2024 projection is really more in line with the growth factor of 2023, but we continue to see that growing slightly into 2025. So we've got that 5.9 million in there. 2.2 is specifically for revenue from the Gondola Parking Garage. We do have an expense built in for the garage of 1.9 million, and that does not include the COP debt payment of 2.3 million due next year on the garage. Other revenues, the Snowstang, this is money that we get from Vale Ski Resorts, and that's the contribution towards the transit operation of the Snowstang. Other revenue within the transit program, that 853,000, that is primarily from grants and IGA base. So we have the 5311 Formula Grants for Rural Areas, and that is specifically for the operations and admin reimbursement to operate the free ride. We also get a payment from the Summit Stage to operate the Purple Route. You'll see a Vale Ski Resorts reimbursement of 61 grand, and that is for the offering the Blue Route. They continue to help fund that. And the transfer from Excise Fund of 3.6 million, that is to keep a favorable fund balance in the parking and transportation for the end of the year. For expenses, we have a transfer that comes out of that 1.05 million, and that goes over to the Capital Fund, and that is to cover the cost of the Blue River Pathway Project, the master plan, final draft, and the implementation, which covers the Living Land, Living Lab Plaza, the Sawmill Pedestrian Connection, the Rec Path signage, and the Dark Sky Lighting Conversion. There is also a small reduction in headcount that's dropping our seasonal part-time staff down from 9.94 to 9, and that is for the seasonal transit. There was a slight change in, in how that was getting rolled out. There is a new reserve that was originally as a restriction under the IT Fund. We had a decision to move that over to the Parking and Transportation Fund and created a reserve for this. In 2027, we have a project to replace parking meters. So we're going to hold that reserve until that project completes in those future years. Outside of the, for the restriction, we are also holding two years of debt service, and that's for the Gondola Garage. For the entirety of the debt, we still owe 48.6 million, and that's through 2044. There is a very small change in our fees, and that's specifically just one line item, and that's for the South Gondola Garage Winter Peak. That is currently at $18, and that is changing to 28, but that is the only fee change.
Tracy, when you net out cash flow on the parking garage, does it, is it a positive or negative?
It's negative.
How much?
Well, you have the debt on top of.
And when you include principal and interest?
Yeah, we're probably negative 2 million, maybe more, maybe two and a half. Yeah.
Do you want to, Shannon, talk a little bit about the parking structure expenditures? We talked a little bit about that. It's in expenditures by program line.
I'll let Matt talk to it, because I think just to Dick's question, when you're, Dave, when you're answering that question, are you talking, it's negative just on South Gondola Lot revenue to South Gondola Lot expenses, including?
Yes.
Okay, so what that doesn't include is the lift ticket tax.
Oh.
Right, so. Yes.
Does that, have you netted out the share that we pay back to Vale Resorts? Okay, so when you bring the lift ticket tax in, we're now positive four.
We are, if you attribute that to it, yeah.
Man, I think that was kind of the original intent, so. Back when that tax was passed.
It covers that.
But it was the.
It covers that negative balance, and then it gets applied to transit, essentially.
Yeah. Well, it ends up being a plus four, which is good.
Can you just talk a little bit about South Gondola Lot expenses?
Yeah, the, the main part of that 1.9 million that's budgeted for this next year is $830,000 budgeted for our rent payment to the ski resort. So that's really the majority, or 50% of the payment itself. This year, we paid $760,000. So that's the majority of it. The rest of it is really basic maintenance repairs, our facilities team, our labor, doing the basic things that need to keep the building functioning and looking good, so.
Includes our utility, so gas and electric.
Yeah, how much is that? I'm just curious. Do you heat that upper deck?
We, we put in some, I'm actually pulling up the exact numbers here. We put in some pretty good barriers this last winter that actually dropped our price quite substantially in gas. We were able to throttle the system up and down based on when usage was going to come and also when storms were going to come. So it did drop substantially this last year, but it was still in the neighborhood of $300,000 for.
How much?
$300,000 for, for natural gas. But that's a pretty good step down from what it was the year prior. So we also have a new plan this year of not heating the upper deck when we don't need it, based on demand that we know now, when, when people are coming in to utilize the structure. If we're sitting at 50% full, we can keep the upper decks closed, so.
Are we utilizing the moisture temperature controls on that system?
Best that we can, yes. It's not, it's, I think there's a little more design work in it that isn't quite, it, it doesn't read as well as we do, I think, and, and know. It takes a long time to throttle it up and slow it down. Whereas we can physically know a storm is coming in two days, and we can go turn it on so that it's prepared for when it needs to be there.
It's an interesting concept to not, I mean, I'm all for not heating something we're not going to use, but at the same time, I'd rather just see us use it. So I don't know if there's.
Yeah.
You know, teamwork with the Vale, with Vale Resorts that we can do to get more people in. It'd just be nice if it was always full.
Yeah, and they, and they've really been pushing the idea of car share.
Yeah.
Car pooling, so they give 50% discount on those, or more in the car. Again, they, per our agreement, they do set pricing in the winter, which is really where we kind of have our, have our issue with getting it filled up.
I do think after a conversation with John Copeland last week that they are looking at two or three additional strategies for getting more people into the structure, having some, potentially some reserved spaces for car pooling, doing a deeper discount for car pooling. We had one more idea that I can't remember off the top of my head, but I think they heard you loud and clear on your desire to get more cars in there. And I think that ties in really well with the parking on Block 11 and the changes out there. So they, they agree they need to push more people into the core.
So we probably want to be careful implementing too much without being in lockstep with them, because I definitely think that the priority would be to us out at McCain and Airport Road, then more, and heat it if it needs to be heated.
I still think there's a huge opportunity for wayfinding throughout the morning. You know, not just waiting till the skiria fills theirs first. I think if there's, if it's queued up, they ought to be sending them down the way.
And don't quote me on this, because I don't have my notes in front of me. I think that third thing was potentially pricing the South Gondola Lot lower than the North Gondola Lot.
That'd be awesome.
So I think there's a few things that they're working on. I don't know exactly what they're going to come up with, but.
Yeah, and we did prove that concept this summer with, you know, we, we kind of went with our own pricing strategy, and it definitely worked to fill that garage during the summer, so.
We, are we going to look at parking rates at another work session here later this fall? Or is this kind of the, the shot to look at them? And I only bring it up as, you know, kind of dig your point there about filling the, the garage. There's a few on here that just, it's like, oh, that, it doesn't push you, some of the pricing here doesn't push you to the garage, you know? Tonopah, Ice House, Tiger Dredge just look really, you know, and maybe we want those more affordable, I don't know. But just curious if we're going to beat that up at some point.
They're more south, I think, so. Ice House isn't, but the other two are.
We can certainly take a look at those. We like to adopt the fees and fees during the budget process, but we can always bring them back, and we have in the past brought them back to you off-budget time. To get approval. So Matt can take a look at that.
It'd just be fun to take a lap through it, just to, yeah, and I, I don't quite know what the exact motivation is on certain lots and what we're looking for, but seems like there might be some opportunity to push some more folks to the garage.
And we may need to bring it back to you anyway if the skiria suggests something different.
Right.
Thanks much.
The other thing, just on bank card charges, we spend a lot on bank card charges for when people are paying for parking. It's, you know, the more people park and pay, the more we pay in bank card charges. So Matt and Tracy as well are working with Interstate. We've just switched over to a new system, and we're really hoping to see a reduction in those charges, which I think for the South Gondola Lots, like 121,000.
Correct.
So hopefully, we'll, you know, have some ability to bring some of the expenses down as well.
They're kind of passing fees like the interchange fee.
Yeah.
Yep.
Anything else? So moving on to the Childcare Fund. I know.
Some parking, good?
Very good. So Childcare Fund, that is, gets some of its funding or most of its funding from the Marijuana Fund. We only transfer over the amount that Marijuana Fund can afford. For expenses, you'll see that we have dropped down to zero personnel costs, and that's because of that 10% of Cory's salary is no longer getting charged to this fund with her transition over to the Summit County Housing Authority, and we are not planning on allocating any other staff to this fund for next year. There is capital expense of 1.7 million, and that is broken down by 1.25 million is going to go for the Montessori repairs. We do have repairs considered of 1.25 also in 2026 to complete that project. 200,000 is included to finish off the Timberline Learning Center, and we also have 250,000 for the addition to the Little Red Classroom as well, is built in. For the study.
Yeah, for the design. One other thing on the child care is we're not doing the transfer anymore from Excise. It's been running 1.2 million. We've, it's zero going forward.
That was that discretionary 0.5% accommodations tax?
No, it's just a, it was just a general transfer. To help fund the projects for housing.
The Carol's, I think we, it was money that we were putting into marketing.
Yeah.
And then when we stopped putting it into marketing, we switched it to childcare.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, but yes, it was a discretionary.
Half a percent.
Yeah. Yeah.
The restriction of $5 million that you'll see continuing on throughout the years, it is going to diminish as each year spends the money on different capital program plans throughout the next five years. You'll see that the balance in the fund from 2025, which is right now 1, 1.3 million, that's going to dwindle down over the next five years, and Dave will talk about that once we get to that part of the presentation.
On childcare.
For cemetery funds, there's really nothing to call out. There are no fee changes. The fee schedule is included within the budget packet.
They're planning to put in a columbarium next year, which is like a wall for ashes.
For ashes?
Yeah.
Oh, that's cool.
The perpetual care fee.
I love that.
Is that what it sounds like?
We dig them up.
The perpetual care fee is paid upfront with the purchase of a space.
It's one time.
It's a one-time fee, and the intent is to fund the, or seed the fund well enough to be able to do maintenance for, not probably forever, definitely not forever.
I read that as an annual fee.
No, it's a, it's a one-time fee.
Thank you.
Tell him. All right, marijuana. This fund specifically supports our childcare fund. You'll see that the marijuana tax, there is a slight deflation that we're proposing in 2025, and that's just because as people can go further afield to purchase their, their supplies, we do see that diminishing. From the expense, there has been a reallocation of the detective. Instead of there being a full-time detective, detective expense to this fund, we have reduced it down to 0.3%, and then the other 0.7 goes back towards the public safety expenses. And the transfer for the, the balance of 300,000 goes over to the childcare fund. And ideally, we transfer as much as we can. We're just leaving a small balance available in this fund, just to keep it positive.
So just a couple of things I wanted to point out. When we first started with legalized marijuana, the detectives over at PD were doing a lot of work on fake IDs and issuing summonses. They're not doing as much of that work anymore, and so we felt it was appropriate to do a portion of a detective instead of a full-time detective on that. And I think as people are buying less, you know, in this, this area, there's less for them to be doing. The other thing I wanted to mention, and it really relates to childcare, you know, we went to the countywide tuition assistance last year. It has been wildly successful. So the program budget, I think, is up to about 2.2 million for the 24, 25 school year. We are capable of covering our costs to that program, but there are some other towns that are struggling a little bit. And so we have asked the B O C C to consider allocating some of the Strong Futures childcare funds to this First Steps program. We don't know yet if they'll be agreeable to that or what that might look like, but just so you know, we are looking to potentially try to offset some of the tuition costs with Strong Futures dollars.
Questions? Special projects.
There are, really, the biggest revenue stream for special projects is a transfer from the Excise Tax Fund, and that's to keep the fund balance positive after all of our expenses. There's also a transfer of 100,000 from the Open Space Fund, and that is to cover the cost of our BRIC history, or to help towards a BRIC history project. From expenses, it's really made up of our two major partners, and that is BRIC Creates and BRIC History. The 2.5 expense for BRIC Creates, that is for their operations and capital improvements. So some of those capital improvements are actually funds that then get back to us. So it's kind of multi-level, the way that the program works. We pay them, you know, X amount of dollars. They then allocate some of those funds back to us for projects that our Facilities Department is going to take the, the oversight and the governance of the control over. And then Facilities also then, the Facilities Fund then pays for those projects as well. So you've got some money sort of moving back and forth a little bit for that. There is a very small increase to the grant expense, up to 310,000. And we do have a new $50,000 expense in there for special programs, special events and programs for Food for the FERC is also considered in this fund. For BRIC History, and it is supported in this budget packet with our updated CIP. So when we came to you last month with the, the CIP program, they did take out about 2.7 million overall over those next five years out of their CIP. Primarily, the 2025, we have 620,000 in their CIP, and the biggest project that they have next year is 360,000, and that's for the mini mine compressor shop. 860,000 is for the operation. Uh, eight hundred and sixty thousand is for the operational support. And they did take out, uh, about five hundred and fifty-five thousand in twenty twenty-six, about one point two million twenty-seven, about one point three million in twenty twenty-eight. And then there was a slight increase in their C I P to their presentation loss of last month in twenty twenty-nine of three hundred odd thousand.
So one question for Dave and Tracy, the, the grant line is that our grants and scholarships that the town gives out plus the fifty thousand for the FERC?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, you know, I wanted to highlight, um, and thank Larissa for going back and taking another look at that, her capital budget. I think it's probably less than half of what it was when it was originally presented. And then just to clarify on the B C A. If you, you know, if you take out our, the facilities, um, pass through, what we give to them that they turn around and give back to us. The remaining amount is, there's fifty thousand dollars in there for facilities projects that they are responsible for. And this year Tamara sat down with Matt Pellet and they really dug into the facilities type work and figured out what should be our responsibility and what should be their responsibility. So that fifty K is in there for things that are their responsibility. And then the remaining operational, say, dollars are four percent over last year. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, because if you went in and did the math, you know, it looked like it was more than four percent, and that's really just that fifty thousand dollars for, um, their facilities. So we're happy to answer any questions that you might have on that. And Steve, I don't know if you want to talk at all about the B C A budget, but, um, I guess this is the time when we do definitely need a head nod from you all on the brick history side and the B C A side of this budget.
So Shannon, I do have some comments about Brick Create. I don't know if that should be before or after Brick History or how you want to do that.
Kelly, do you have a preference?
I think it's great if you want to go ahead.
Brick Create has a history, uh, of course, this predates me, so I'm, uh, bringing hearsay to the council of multi-year budgets, and their budget is submitted this year for a two-year period. I think that based upon a lot of other conversations that have been going on, the council and administration is looking more at a one-year funding rather than a two-year funding. And that has to be done, I think, with a certain eye towards the effect that it's going to have on what creates ability to fundraise, number one, and plan, number two. We don't expect the master planning to be completed in advance, much in advance, if at all, of when their budgeting process will start again next year. So I think we have to at least give a, an assurance that current funding levels will be relatively consistent going on. And that they aren't going to need to be planning for some kind of a crisis funding, just because we're not funding it for two years instead of their usual pattern. So Tamara is really working this over and really looking at where we're going to be. And I think we all are very excited about the idea that this master plan is going to give us a direction of how we use Brick Create with our B T O issues of how are we getting more people here for a more extended period of time and working our room rates over. So while I think we're okay with where we are this year, when it comes back around next year, I'll be reminding everybody that we really wanted two years in this fund. And we don't want to have any big surprises, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and I, I would just add to that, because I had a little bit of a hard time, um, understanding exactly the budget for B C A. And so I sat down with Tamara and on, I, oh, maybe page forty-two is their kind of the actual numbers and it's in thousands. So it's a little bit confusing to look at. It looks different than the rest of the numbers in our packet. But if you go to the expenses supported by town, which is in the top half of, um, that page. And really, it's like the facilities and technical respo- support is one point three million. And then the arts district and all that programming that we do there and all the, um, kind of community stuff that I feel like really is at the, you know, direction of town council is that seven seventy. So that's seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And so, and then the admin, I think, is that three seventy-four. So I guess I just had been all over the board with whether we really have enough information to do the two-year, um, funding cycle or not. But then when I looked at, you know, two million dollars of this budget is facilities and the arts district, which we're pretty committed to, I would think, unless something drastic changed our minds on that. It feels to me that, um, it's not hugely out of alignment with our priorities to continue with the two-year budget stream, but I'm certainly up for discussion on it.
I'm curious, just, I don't know if it's like an accounting piece on the facilities, but what caused the three fifty bump there on the facilities and the technical support? Just walk me through that again.
So.
Just to understand.
Yeah, so I will, um, it's primarily our expense, I think, is the increase that you see in there because, um, Tamara did sit down with Matt and run through the things that we, the town. So the town expense is three hundred and eighty-three, which is up from one ninety-ish last year. And again, that's a pass-through, that's giving them money and then us taking it back. But that's included in there. And, you know, some of it is stuff we didn't have on our list. So we are starting to collect money for this future uh, replacement of, of an item. Um, in some cases, we might be replacing an item and collecting for the reimbursement. So that's where you see, or replacement, sorry. So that's where you, I think you see the biggest increase in that number. So it's the, whatever that difference is between the three eighty-three and the one ninety-ish plus the fifty K that they have added into their budget. I think that's making up the, probably the biggest part of that. And I, I know Tamara and both Tamara and the town have a, um, good spreadsheets of the increases in the facilities costs that we could share with you guys if you'd like to see those.
Yeah, that was something I think she's been working on for a while to figure out like, hey, how much of the budget is facilities and is, you know, we should be kind of be, yes, right, sad since you were on it.
And I think to that point, um, it would be good to know the difference to have facilities and tech support split out.
Yeah.
So that you can see the difference.
Yeah, I think that's important. I, you know, the two ways of looking at facilities, you know, it's just the hard facilities that, that talent contracts and takes care of. Or production-based support for this facilities, which gets pretty gray. It gets pretty mushy. Do these numbers include, um, the Breck Theater and the Eclipse?
So they include the, um, facilities cost of maintaining those.
So like pile in a bathroom or something like that should be part of this?
I don't know where that split comes. That might be our responsibility, but the dollars are in there. Um, but it does include the money that it takes to keep all of those facilities in working order.
I think to your point, it's not totally clear. And part of one of the things that we did, um, talk about in the arts, kind of one of the many meetings that we've all had is just having either Keely or someone review all those contracts to help us understand what's included where and who's doing what. And instead of us just not being really informed on that.
Correct. And where I'm going for this kind of investment, I, I, I would really hope that we could get to a place where our partner organizations don't have to pay a lot of this stuff. You know, because I feel like we're paying for it now. And I, I'm not sure that's always the case. You know, where do utilities fall? Where do repairs and maintenance fall? Where, where, you know, it, it really, Kelly, to your point, I mean, big numbers like, like, you know, a tech board at the, the, at the theater or the projector at the eclipse, you know. Wh- whose is that? And it just seems whenever those come up, they always come back to us that we have to write another check. So, um, I, I just, um, I, I'm really worried about those partner organizations. And I would throw in the N R O as well. I'm extremely worried about those partner organizations. And we're really spending a tremendous amount of money here. And I'm still, after all these years, very unclear and what this means for those partner organizations.
I need you for clarifying. We'll try to get that, kind of that separation between town responsibilities, B C A responsibilities, and then we'll also for falls back onto the partners.
Then I'd like to have a follow-up discussion on, do we really want those partner organizations to be responsible for that stuff? I, you know, they're, they're pretty important too.
I really agree with that, Dick. I think nailing down where everyone stands is really important. But I do want to have that follow-up conversation of, um, how, how we can help the arts orgs just.
Yeah. And just for me, I think we're talking N R O, Backstage, and Eclipse and Film Fest and are we missing? Just so we're really specific in trying to go. And so we might have to revisit or do an appropriation or something. Because I don't want to wait another year to take care of those other organizations. I'm, I'm, I'm extremely concerned.
Okay.
Great.
And this number keeps growing a lot. So.
I just want to make sure that everyone, um, feels comfortable with sort of that strategy. Because just in the, you know, interest of not having a couple of us direct staff to put a lot of time into something that maybe others aren't as supportive of. But that we would come back and talk again about sort of arts funding and, um, I guess, just have a better understanding of our arts.
Clarification of everything Dick said. I couldn't agree more.
Okay.
And, um, not putting too much of an onus on this master plan, but I'm hoping that there will be some direction provided in that plan. And so I, while I do, I agree with you, it's super important. I feel like there's been steps taken to address those. And I guess there, we're putting a lot of faith in the fact that they will be addressed. So to, I just, I guess, love to avoid having staff go and do a whole bunch of work and then have a three-hour discussion on it. And then the master plan come out too much later, that just outlines everything and going, oh, okay, we could have just followed that. But I also understand not kicking the can down the road further. But like, we're, there's, I would hope that this is a be spelled out in a roadmap and, uh, with recommendations in the next eleven months.
Jay, do you think, I'm sorry to interrupt, but do you think this work that we've just spoken of would help inform the master plan a little in, in making those decisions and, and preparing that roadmap?
I think there is a, it, it, it all depends on the work being done, right? I think they, the master plan should come with recommendations of how to support our nonprofits, especially the three that we just spoke of. And I don't know if us having a large, uh, discussion or work session over with staff doing a whole bunch of research and breaking down numbers will facilitate their recommendations or not. I'm, I'm not confident, no.
But aren't we talking a little bit about more of the basic brick and mortar side of this? Not just the overall, how are we going to use these organizations? I think what I'm hearing from Dick is here's the Riverwalk Center. Who's paying for it? Whose pocket is this money coming out of? Well, it's coming out of the towns and it's coming out of Brick Creates. And it's coming out of the nonprofits. But what happens when they need a new soundboard? Or what happens when the theater, like you say, the projector goes down? That's all separate and distinct from the way we're going to use Brick Create and the way we're going to use Brick History or Brick, the organization's B T O, right? Am I getting what you're?
That's how I understood it too. And I'm not sure if in the master plan, they're going to get into the weeds.
I don't think so.
Like that. And I think.
Facilities is definitely a part. I know that that's a huge bucket that that is, that is going to be in there. I, again, I don't know how granular they're going to get. Um, but.
Maybe that's the first clarifying question.
I think so.
Yeah, so I feel like maybe having heard this conversation, if Julia and Shannon and Scott can maybe, just realize that we're, as a council, very interested in supporting all of these orgs. And we realize that it's going to probably be in different ways. And so certainly the facilities being a portion of that conversation. And if that needs to come back or a portion of this conversation needs to come back so that it can inform our consultants to be moving in the right direction. Maybe you guys could, um, let us know if there's a work session or something else that needs to happen.
For sure. Um, and I have my meeting with the consultants on Friday, so I will ask some of these questions. And if, um, if all of council hasn't already met with them, um, you got an email to sign up for a thirty or a sixty-minute meeting with them. So please do that so that you can share your thoughts on what you hope to come, you know, have come out of the master planning process.
Great. Um, so we still need to either to give some sort of a nod, um, on the, I think, both, um, Breck History's budget in here and then also B C A's budget. And I think as a third part of that is, um, whether we're comfortable to do the B C A for two years. So Breck History, okay?
Enthusiastically.
Enthusiastic, okay. And Breck, um, creative arts?
Just the funding?
Just the funding for one year and then how about two years?
How much is it going to go up? It always seems to when we do these multiple year.
Well, I think that, um, I think, you know, Tamara knows that the, uh, sort of consistently, it's been that four percent number. Um, but this, she, this gives her the, if you do two years, then you can say four percent and four percent. Um, if you say one year, then we should probably just give her some direction on, you know, for twenty twenty-six, we expect you to come back with a budget that's, you know, say no more than four percent.
I think with the two-year, I'm not as comfortable committing ten amount. I mean, of course, we're fully supported to those, um, facilities, technical support, arts district, what you called out earlier in your presentation. Um, I think it's fair to say the budget likely will be very similar, but we're in the process of a major cultural master plan overhaul. So at this point, I would be comfortable just doing one year.
And I, I hear that and I, I actually agree, uh, in that except the only caveat is that to consider is that if we do get a roadmap in November of next year, a year from now, I don't see any, you know, the implementation time of that and to, to move forward is going to be another year. And so I don't, I'm not necessarily for or against a one-year or two-year budget. But I, I think a two-year budget does make sense as even if we were to say, okay, here's the new plan. There's no way we can flip that switch for a month from when that comes out. Um, I wouldn't think at least. So, uh, just adding color to, to the discussion, not really weighing in one way or the other that it's likely that no matter what the, what the result is, we will have two years more of the current configuration as is.
Yeah. And having said that, if, if we did, like, assuming that we don't have that much more information, I mean, we should have some knowledge of how the public involved. knowledge of how the public involvement has gone and what kind of comments are coming out of that, but um, assuming we wouldn't have the full plan, I guess I'm just wondering, is there an opportunity for us if we hear from the commu- if we approve this for two years, but we hear from the community that some significant change is necessary, would we have the opportunity to, um, sort of remain flexible or like, once it's approved, then the money's pretty much in there?
I mean, it would all be whatever we would need to appropriate if need be.
Historically, when we've done multiple-year budgets, we've always increased what we agreed to before anyway, so they've kinda, they've been a minimum, not really a cap, so. I mean, I've seen that happen over and over.
Jay makes a good point. I look at the commitments that are already in place and the commitments going into twenty twenty-five are already in place. They're working a year ahead. When you're scheduling artists and performers and things into our facilities, we've already got that in place and it's gonna have to be in place again to a certain extent before we get back our master plan documents, so.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more.
I think there's a good argument for a two-year budget for Breck Create because of the need to plan and the need to tell their donors and the people that are self-funding. Hey, this is what we've got coming up and we're fully funded to make this happen.
Yeah, I agree, Steve. It seems like that life cycle's a little longer than other businesses and certainly appreciated all the work on the facilities front to kinda split out those costs and it'd be nice to see, you know, it's interesting, that's, that's sixty percent of the two-point-five, so in my mind, you know, those are arts facilities, but, you know, we're, we're only really spending a mill on programming is what it looks like to me, so, you know, yeah, I support the two years, look forward to even understanding if there's more costs on the facilities to make sure we got that really kinda dialed and I think the master plan's gonna give us direction on how to go forward. This'll give them stability in the meantime.
Did you vote on the team?
It, it doesn't matter, it's fine. I'm good.
Two-year. Okay. All right.
Okay.
They have the votes for two years too.
Moving on to the facilities fund.
Was there anything on Breck History?
I was supported.
Those, okay.
Um, so for the facilities fund, um, and we will be talking a little bit about their capital improvement plan that does maybe, uh, give you some comfort on some of the analysis that has been done for Breck Creates, uh, but with the facilities fund, I mentioned earlier on about the change in methodology for facilities and also for garage where we are gonna be funding, uh, this through the excise tax fund versus an allocation from other departments. There are two areas that do still have an allocation and that will be the utility fund and the golf fund and that is because those are proprietary or enterprise. So those kind of pay for their allocations, whereas everybody else is covered through the excise fund transfer. Uh, and that is that forty-nine-point-nine thousand allocation from golf and utilities. Uh, we also have the transfer that we mentioned earlier for sustainability of that hundred-and-thirty-three thousand. That's for the efficiency and electrification project. Uh, that gives the facilities fund up to five-hundred thousand to now spend because they've already had the funds from capital and sustainability in prior years. You'll see that there is, uh, revenue from Breck Creates of three-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand, which if you went to the, the next page, we have done a, um, I worked with Matt Pelant this year to, uh, create a pro forma, which really looks at all of the responsibilities that falls to Matt's team to manage either the capital purchase or the repairs and maintenance. Um, and it is broken down to the area and the specific item. Uh, Matt and I did meet with Tamara and Neil and her team to go through their needs over the next few years, so you do have the five-year look of what we have planned. Um, and there was kind of a, a breakdown of if it was something that Matt's team needed to be involved, whether it was for the implementation or the oversight of to actually perform the work, it came onto the pro forma, but if it was more of like a one-and-done, like a purchase of a new oven or a new fridge, it did not, we, we did not take that funding over from, uh, Breck Creates because it was more of like, you can go out and plug it in and you're, you're good to go. You don't need Matt's team to manage that purchase. Uh, but there is, uh, an, a, a cost associated to Breck Creates for the, either the purchase or for the future purchase of their projects of three-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand is allocated for this year. Uh, for the restriction, you'll see, uh, that the fixed assets line and this you'll see across other funds. Um, this year was kind of my year of cleanup for fixed assets, so I did a full inventory of all of these areas. Um, so everywhere where you see this restriction, that is based on our fixed asset value with the, uh, appreciated de- spent, uh, uh, accumulated depreciation is reflected in this. We also have a restriction of five-hundred thousand that is carried over year after year through our five-year forecast. Um, and that is for our planned EV facility upgrades to keep that money available. Um, you'll also see following this, that full, uh, five-year CIP for Matt's team um, of what his plans are, and this is something that we will be reviewing, um, on a quarterly basis to see, you know, what changes and to keep this up to date moving forward.
Any questions on facilities?
No, but I loved that list. It was really interesting.
Yeah.
And there's a bigger list that goes out into the future. Our goal is to get the fund balance to where it can cover future CapEx, um, and grow it to eventually ten million over time. That's our goal.
Tracy, I apologize if you covered this. Um, where is the FTEs for facilities? Is that?
It's in the facilities department, which is part of the general fund.
In Public Works under, in the general fund area. It's under James, but it's in its own, own department.
Fund versus the department.
Got it.
Look at how happy she is.
I know. All right, moving on to IT. Um, same thing with facilities. This is based on, um, sorry, not the same as facilities. Uh, this, it gets its funding as a allocation from each department. Chris considers not only software needs but hardware needs and the overstructure of the town and based on his analysis, there is an allocation that he charges each department for the management of everything within that, so that's where you'll see that internal service revenue of two-point-one million.
I'm reading Tracy.
Uh, this funding covers all the expense that, uh, Chris gives him the oversight and the governance to really manage our whole um, landscape within the IT scope. Uh, fixed assets again has gone through a, a full, um, inventory of that hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand. There is reflective of our current value of our fixed assets that live within the IT space. Um, we did remove that hundred thousand for parking meters replacement, which I mentioned early has moved over to the parking and transportation fund as a reserve for the replacement of the parking meters in twenty-twenty-seven. All right, moving on to garage.
On IT.
So Garage, this is the one that went through that change of methodology to get funded primarily by the excise tax fund. Um, we have broken out the, the cost for the internal services for operational, which remains the same as an allocation to each department that has not changed from prior years. Um, there is eight-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand that we have built in for sale of assets and that is primarily, um, sale proceeds that we anticipate from some of our larger equipment that we will be replacing next year. From an expense standpoint, uh, we do have, uh, new heads. We've got a, a, a one full-time for the new fleet supervisor and we also have point-three-six for a part-time intern in this one. Uh, there will be a change to our minor capital. Right now it shows two-point-three million. Uh, that is going to increase, um, by another two-point-two-five million. There was a, uh, a drop of our, um, new, uh, vehicles that we're adding to the fleet. Uh, so when we come back for, to request to adopt the budget, you, there will be a change to this number. And that is to cover approximately two million for two new hybrid buses that we will be introducing next year. We also have sixty thousand that will be on top of this for a rec center van that will be new to the fleet. We have two new escapes we are adding totaling about seventy thousand and we will be adding a new Lightning to the fleet as well. All totals about, uh, two-point-two-five million on top of this, two-point-three. Um, though we don't have to do any more transfers, this fund balance can absorb it and continue absorbing that for the next five years, but that will be added in.
So basically the pro forma that you see for projects, uh, replacements is really for the garage fund, the, the new purchases were not included in that, which is the two buses and a few vehicles. So when we go back for the budget approval, uh, for twenty-twenty-five, we will include that it's cost, so everything you see from a roll-up perspective in this document is about two-point-two million lower than what is actually gonna happen in twenty-twenty-five. So we'll make, we didn't, we weren't able to get the change in for the book today, but we'll, we'll address it when we go forward with the final budget approval, um, until, uh, the next council session.
Hey, good afternoon. Um, just wanted to kinda add to this discussion about the additional dollars and as I kinda look at, at some of the faces here and there's a little bit of confusion. The, um, of the two, over two million dollars, the two of the buses were actually approved as part of the twenty-twenty-three budget and as part of the delay and delivery of those buses, they're now showing up in twenty-twenty-five. So two, two-point-one million of that almost nearly is those buses. The additional equipment, um, some of that is, um, in an effort to, to reach our sustainability goals. So we're looking internally to accelerate some of the replacement of some vehicles to get EV and hybrid-type vehicles. So we will be, um, um, doing a sale of some of the vehicles that those are replacing. Rec Center is actually in that equation too, as they've made a request due to some of the increases of the programs that that's facilitating that, so that there then lies kind of the sum of the, the dollars. Um, and as it's been mentioned here by, um, the finance team, some of the, the, um, the capture of those dollars was lost in some of the new processing of the pro forma form and some of the older processes. There's just a little bit of a, um, process, um, mess on that, so, um, hopefully that adds a little bit of background to the, to the additional dollars that are being um, added at this point.
Thanks, James. Questions for James?
James, when it comes to this incredibly impressive list of, uh,
Here?
Is, is there, is there a strategy or an effort to try to, um, eliminate the diverseness of the, of the vehicles and the, um, the machinery of trying to at least like consolidate or have a twenty or thirty-year plan to try to consolidate how many, you know, how many manufacturers you have or whatever it is so that the, the, the parts in the fleet area isn't just so overwhelming of just needing ten different manufacturers for a, just, or, you know, a car or, you know, the snowplows or whatever it is.
Yeah, that's a great question and, and probably the easy answer is, is yes. There is a philosophy that applies to the garage fund for to, to meet all those objectives and certainly those goals. I think some of the challenges that exist in this, in, in the greater area of Public Works and all the services that we do, um, is trying to find a kind of a one-size-fits-all. You know, I think it's easier in some of those smaller vehicles, like whether it's a Ford or Chevy or something like that. Um, we do try to, to stay with one, um, make, manufacturer. In some instances, we've had to deviate just due to availability of equipment and also then again, that's coupled with some of the, the increased service demands of some of the different areas that we have within Public Works. Again, we maintain all the vehicles for, everything from police department through the rec department, through open space and, um, golf and Nordic are, are kinda the outliers in that as far as some of our oversight. Um, however, if you do look at some of our equipment within the divisions of Public Works, you will see a lot of similar type of equipment. Um, again, on the heavier equipment, that's where things kind of go and get a little bit out. It's not easier to, as easy to contain all those companies. I mean, certainly we hear stories all, all the time of some of the bigger manufacturers going out or being consolidated or being bought out and, um, I can say and, and, and happy to say that over the years for most of our heavy iron fleet, we've been John Deere. And that's largely been and to, to meet, uh, a lot of those things you just stated, Jay, to stay with the similarities of how the equipment not only operates, but all the filter changes, tire sizes, all those things that our mechanics have to live day in and day out. Um, the one additional thing to that is the buses. The buses have been, um, while we provide a tremendous service to the public, there's, that's not an easy feat from behind the curtain as far as the maintenance of those buses. There's been a lot of technology changes in those buses and like everything else that we know pretty well now, everything is controlled by computers and software and just the technology and the understanding of our fleet to stay up, not only stay up with all that stuff, but also then to translate that into real repairs and downtime is challenging. Um, and as the storyline has been here for, for some time now, it's just the, with these electric buses, we have, it's been, um, even, even exponentially more challenging, kinda with, with what we know about Proterra and now Phoenix. So ho- hopefully that answers some of the questions. Shannon, I know you wanna add.
Yeah, and I think, so this is something that James and I have already talked about. I feel that we grew really fast for a period of time. We added things, so we needed vehicles and, um, didn't necessarily allow time for the, um, purchase of maybe the same kind of vehicle that we had used in the past. I believe we need to get to what, exactly what you were saying is have, um, policies around what kind of vehicles we're buying as much as we can. The type, you know, to, the, the type, the model, the make, all the things that can make the fleet operations run more smoothly so that I'm not having to store and supply a variety of different parts for a million different vehicles. Um, we also are going to look at our procurement policies and what our policies are around buying new vehicles, replacing vehicles early, that kind of thing. Um, and I know Kelly's been asking us to look at an electrification policy, so kinda layering that in with everything that we're doing, but you know, when you look at that list, it's very clear. We have a wide variety of vehicles and in some cases that's necessary and in other cases it's not.
Excellent.
Well, thank you and, you know, I appreciate, um, the logistics that goes into everything you said and then having to have air filters for fifty different manufacturers and then needing someone that can work on fifty different media, like the, the amount of the onus that it puts on the actual people that are in, um, it's difficult, so thank you for looking at that.
And the only other thing I wanted to add is the intern um, is hopefully something that we will do in partnership with the school district. So we're really hoping to, um, get some of their kids who are interested in fleet work, um, to be able to come over and work with us, so that's a work in progress, but.
I was just gonna thank you for, um, I know that there are a lot of unknowns with electrification and some of the new, um, technology that, you know, council's always asking you to look into, so thank you very much for being willing and then, um, as much thank you for that internship. I know when we visited the high school last year that they were really interested in, um, us getting something like that going and interns are a lot of work, so appreciate you. Appreciate you guys being willing to do that. Anything else for James?
I, I would just add, this budget process helps all of us realize the magnitude of your department and you do a great job, your whole team. I mean, I just, I'm so impressed with Public Works.
Well, thank you, Dick.
The scope of work that you guys do.
Yeah, it's really is a, a, a. Yeah, it's really is a a team effort. And there's a lot of incredible people that make up Public Works and that that fulfill the mission. So thank you.
And before we move on from the uh garage fund, I just want to uh really say thank you to Ken Hilt, who had to put up with a year of me working with him to build out a pro forma and go through every item of this inventory. This is just a a portion of the item of the vehicles and equipment that we have. You're just seeing the ones through replacement over the next five years. It's a a full list. So I just want to say thanks to Ken for putting up with me for a year to get this built out.
Thank you, Ken, wherever you are.
He's on holiday, but still.
Oh, good. Even better.
Yeah, so moving on to the Conservation Trust uh Fund. Uh, this fund is really just a pass through of the sale, our proceeds from the distribution of the sale of lottery tickets that is uh available to us to then move on to the capital fund for the uh support for our recreational and park project. So you really don't, you see money coming in from CTF and then is a transfer straight over to the capital fund. Moving on to Open Space. Um, so Open Space, they get a point five percent allocation from sales tax. Um, that's from the total distribution. Uh, so that is our three point six million that you see hitting as revenue. Uh, for our expense, we have considered a four million dollar minor capital. That is for potential purchase of land acquisitions from for next year. Uh, some transfers to speak of the breakdown into that two hundred and fifty three thousand. A hundred and thirty two thousand of it goes over to the capital fund, and that's for the Blue River Monitoring and Maintenance and for the McCain Open Space Planning for Tract Eight. Uh, there's also a hundred thousand that goes over to special projects, and that's for the brick history that we spoke about earlier. And there's also tri uh twenty thousand dollars that we transfer over to the utility fund, and that's for the uh usage for water. Um, there is no new headcount in this department, but you will see that slight bump um in the headcount. And that is just really a reallocation of the Director and Assistant Director of uh Community Development. We've just done a a slight adjustment. So you'll see a uh that just that transition once we get to the general fund from Comdev over to Open Space.
I'm sorry, where did you say that the brick history money was?
Uh, that is a hundred thousand that you'll see as a transfer out. So within that two hundred and fifty three thousand, a hundred thousand of that goes over to the Special Projects Fund.
And is that a recurring or that just um is for this year's?
It's been pretty uh stable at that hundred thousand in past years.
Thank you.
Do you guys have any questions on Open Space? Um, and if not, this we're four minutes away from our scheduled break. And since the next item is workforce housing, maybe take that break now. We could, I guess we try to get housing done in four minutes. All right. Back about the two fifteen ish still for everybody? We're being generous unless you guys want to come back soon.
Two oh two.
My copy or email sounds.
Just the big month.
We're all back and ready to move forward with housing. I have to get to the right page.
Okay, so starting now with the Workforce Housing Fund, couple of uh items in revenue I'd like to highlight, please. Uh, there is the expense reimbursement line, and that is the funds that we receive from the Summit County Summit County Housing Authority. And that's to cover uh Cory as she is uh supporting them in their new role. That contract does run through twenty twenty five, so that is a full expense for the full year. We have a grant of one point four eight five million, and that is for the infrastructure for the start of Runway. The Housing Helps uh county contribution of eight hundred thousand. Uh, that is for the shared expense for the funding that we provide to buyers uh that we split with Summit County. So that's their uh fifty percent reimbursement. And then we also have rental income of five hundred and seventy eight thousand. And that's for uh for the Larkspur, for Huron Landing, for Ula, for the Lodge, for Koto, which covers Blue Fifty Two. And then Alpine Edge, we get revenue, and that's for the Tano properties that are rented to employees. There is five hundred and seventy nine thousand impact fees uh permit, which is actually a fee that's collected by our Comdev Department, and that's based on the square footage uh for new developments. Uh, the transfer from Excise Fund is there to help keep the ha uh Housing Fund afloat. For expenses, we did uh increase that to the CIP compensation we had last month. So there is built in expense of Housing Helps of just slightly over three million, three point zero seven seven million. And for buy downs, it was increased to two point five million. That is now considered within the uh the cost expense as well. We have a hundred and twenty five thousand for the design work for the Lodge remodel. We also have eight point six five million for Runway for next year. Then that project goes out for a few more years, and then we will be finishing off stables with a two point six million dollar expense. Restrictions carry uh two years for the debt services, and those are the COPs that we have outstanding for Huron Landing. That will be uh through twenty thirty five. We also have the COP for Ula that goes through twenty forty one and Larkspur that goes through twenty forty two. For the number of you inventory of units, um, we I hope to have seven one thousand seven hundred sixty one through twenty twenty five. And as you'll see in the five year plan, that will hopefully get up to two thousand one hundred fifty eight through twenty twenty nine. Um, we do have called out in the lower part of this schedule, the uh Excise Fund Transfer Balance, kind of a loan um that we anticipate to start paying back to the Excise Fund or transfer back from housing to Excise. We plan to start in twenty twenty eight if everything goes to plan.
Does anyone have any questions?
I do. Um, you know, it looks like we're restricting some twenty eight million or so in um, you know, two years of debt service um for all of our loans. Is that is that accurate?
Um, the restriction for the debt service of our three uh housing projects, uh COPs, is about five point four million. And then on the other loans we have um that we've given to Vista Verde and Pinewood Two. Um, those those are the those are the rest that you would get close to around twenty one million for those loans.
Okay.
But the debt service is two years of the debt payments.
Yeah. So I'm wondering if I I I fully understand the need for restricting two years of debt service with things like the dam and and uh water treatment plants and things like that. But I I I look at housing as as kind of a different animal. And it's it's something that um that I I feel like it it's 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 a different asset than than some of the other expenditures on infrastructure and such. And and Dave, I this is more of a question for you. Um, I, you know, I would like to see us only restrict one year of that service just just on on these assets because I think they're they're unique. And there's such a need for housing in the community to be able to free up those funds, to be able to invest it into housing would would would, you know, be a bit of a game changer for us. And I I wanted to touch, see how you feel about possibly going down that road.
And there's two ways to look at that. One would be that would change the five four to two seven if it's one year. The other thing to look at is we are restricting this. We are restricting really money that we're getting from Summit County that um, you know, they pay fifty percent of Huron and fifty percent of Larkspur. That's about a million dollars that we um are restricting a uh that we would not really necessarily. We're restricting our payments, but fifty percent fifty percent of those two are coming back to us. So if we restricted our portion, we could shave off a couple of million that way if you wanted to leave the two years. So if we left it two years of what our liability would be, if we could take that down two million on that restriction, um, but still keep the two million as a, I'll call it a policy versus maybe changing to one one year. But if we did the one year, it'd be two point seven. But I'd be comfortable shaving off what we get from Summit County because that that's more coming back to us. Um, you know, from that perspective.
How others feel about that?
I'll go, um, I think that I, from a policy standpoint, I really like the conservative nature of having a two year debt payment um reserve and or is there a restriction or reserve?
Restriction.
Restriction. Fantastic. Um, I really, I I like the conservative nature of that two year uh restriction. However, I do completely agree that if the money, we shouldn't be restricting the the county's portion of that debt service. And so I would be very much in favor of keeping the two year restriction in place, but accounting for the the county's portion and not including that in the restriction.
Yeah, I think I could I could definitely get my arms around that as well.
Maybe I'm looking at this wrong, but I think the the more um the one that's less likely to be funded is the county side of it. I mean, it just, we have, and I only say that because we have control over our money, right? And so and we're responsible for the debt, not the county. So if something happened and the county, for whatever reason, wasn't able to pay their portion, I think I'd rather have that restricted. And maybe it's fifty fifty and it's six one half dozen the other. But I'd rather, if you're going to be flexible, be flexible on something we control versus on something we don't control. And it might be better to have that money in the bank. Um, and then my other question is just on what the auditor, does it, would the auditor have an opinion on it?
Um, I would definitely run it by Jim, but I I would, I think he would be fine because this is a one of our policies. Um, and um, you know, so whether we restricted the county piece and not our piece or our piece and not the county piece, we're talking two million or um the delta of um whatever that number is, two point seven million. So or three point four million. So either way, I do think there's opportunities to work on that restriction to free up some of the the housing, the requirements that we have. I do think we can do that. But let me do a little bit more research and come back with a recommendation, if that's okay.
You guys comfortable with him turning Dayblues to look at that?
I love it. I mean, we've made such an investment in housing, and there's been incredible work done by staff, and there's still more work to do. So.
Okay.
Extra mill, two, three. Yeah, track it down.
Okay.
And then um, can we get a little more money for Housing Helps?
Let's just roll it right.
No, I was kidding. Are you? No. About we, as soon as they tell me we're out, I I won't be anywhere.
Of the runway discussion on November twelfth. And you may have some requests for some additional funding for that project once you see what it looks like. So you might hold off on adding any more money to Housing Helps until you have a chance to look at that. And maybe we, you know, you do something like you did this year where if it's gangbusters and they're running out of cash next year, that depending on our position, our financial position, they can come back and ask for an appropriation.
Do we still have money in Housing Helps right now?
Um, yeah, we have a little bit. I think um we um, I think it's about five hundred and twenty thousand left right now, but I think we're going to, we have four people that are in process. So I think we will spend every bit of what you gave us, um, which is going to be great. I think we'll end up with maybe like thirty Housing Helps this year instead of our goal, which was twenty. So, yeah, yeah. And the really, really good thing is um in October, we are clo- closing seven Housing Helps in October. Um, that's huge. And of those seven, six are split with the county, so they make them those really efficient ones. So.
And they're new, right?
And they're new.
And they're new. They're new buys as opposed to deeds on existing. So people are getting into houses.
Been super busy.
Remind me, where are we at with assets held from the buy down program that haven't been resold?
I think we just have one, I I believe.
Five hundred and
Ski and Racket, which is for sale or buy down.
One left?
Yeah, yeah.
Flipped?
Yep.
Yeah, we flipped everything except for Ski and Racket. We have interest in it too right now.
Cool.
The cash back.
Love it.
So I know you've heard this before, but I'm just gonna say it because we do not want um you to slow down on particularly housing helps. So if it, if you have people coming in the door and need more money, they will find it for you.
Now where um it's late in the year and the closings might be pushed sort of into January. So if it's a acquisition, so um I think we'll make it through.
Okay.
Laurie, where are we on our goal? I I think we said our goal is twenty one hundred and twenty one fifty eight units. You know, I we, I know we have that big pro forma spreadsheet. And I'm just curious, are we gonna exceed that, do you think?
Well, it's interesting because our original goal was a five year goal from twenty, I think the blueprint was in twenty two. Um, and I think um our goal at that point was like nine hundred and twenty one units. Um, I mean, I think the timing is a little pushed out, but we are going to achieve those nine hundred and twenty one units. Um, I think it might be, we have to finish up Vista Verde Two, get those open and online. Um, and then moving into Runway, um, that will count towards that. So we're gonna, we're gonna get the number. It might just get pushed out a little bit.
Does that number include um Begley's Project? Cool.
Yeah, yeah. It includes the first phase of Begley's Project, which is twenty two deed restricted, twenty four market rate. Um, it doesn't include the other um like eighty units that he owes us. So that'll be in addition to what we had initially projected as part of that five year.
Great work.
A lot, a lot coming on.
I had a question about in the revenues, there's something called rental assistance payments. And I was just, there isn't any money in there, but I was curious what that was historically.
That's the program where we help our employees with rentals.
Yeah, that's, we've moved that now to the general fund.
Okay.
As a part of um our UDAP program, Down Payment Program.
Oh, is that down payment?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
That that, yeah.
Did anyone have any other questions for housing or Tracy or Dave?
I I have to move along.
Thank you. Thanks.
You very much.
Thanks.
Size Tax Fund. Um, for the accommodation tax, uh, we are reducing that in twenty twenty five. We're proposing taking that down to five point five million. And that's based on the BTO prediction of the lower number of tourists saying it's about eight point three percent reduction uh that we are proposing. Sales tax and rent is flat to our twenty four projection. Um, for the expenses, you'll see that it really tr- uh details out all of the transfers that go to all of the other funds that we've sort of spoken throughout this uh this budget. Um, there is a a remaining debt service payment that is lives within this fund, and that's for the two thousand and seven childcare facility that does end in twenty twenty seven and the two thousand and six police station that ends next year. So we'll see that COP finally getting paid off. For restrictions for the debt service, that is um, sorry, the For restrictions for the debt service, that is, um, sorry, the restriction on the capital projects, that is three years' worth of CIP. Um, and you'll see that the ending fund balance of thirty million after restrictions is a very healthy fund balance to have in the excise fund.
So basically the reductions we've made in the CIP about a month ago has lowered our restriction going forward for the three years. We were hovering between forty and five and fifty million. Uh, at least today, when we look out the three years, it's at around twenty-six million, which is giving us a more flexible fund balance in excise. And when we look at the discretionary fund balances on our getting towards the five-year part, you'll see that reflected there. But we're not, I just keep an eye on the excise fund to make sure it's, it has flexibility for things that we might have happen. So that, it's good to have that back up to thirty million.
And I think when you look at the cash flow as we get farther into the presentation, that thirty million is basically the difference between the money we have in the bank and the money that ceiling or basement ceiling, the hundred or one hundred and thirty-five million that we feel like we need to retain in the bank. Um, so that's that difference there. So just, I think Dave wanted me to mention that, um, it's, it's not the money tree replicating itself that, you know, that's, that is your discretionary money, but we, you know, obviously want to be thoughtful about.
Yeah.
Where we use it.
Gets us back into a healthier position. I would look at it that way. Yeah.
Uh, quickly, as we run through the graphs, you'll see that the sales tax, um, is going to be, is flat to recent years. The accommodation tax collection, uh, that was taken down in twenty twenty-four and in twenty twenty-five. And that's because of the slight reduction in ADR that we anticipate. And ret is flat for my graph lovers.
Oh, Tracy. Hey Tracy, on the, on the restrictions for debt service to Dick's point, are, are those lower now because we don't need the two years of restrictions since they're expiring?
It's still two years, but the police one finalizes next year. So the, the remaining restriction is really on the twenty-six, twenty-seven for the childcare facility that will get, uh, that finishes off in that year.
So in the five-year, it'll, it'll just go to zero on those.
If we have one year left of payments, we don't have two years of restrictions. We don't have one year.
It's just the remaining balance.
Whatever's left over. You got it.
Yep, moving on to golf. So with golf, the revenue, the fees, we are not increasing in twenty twenty-five. Um, we are planning a slight fee increase in twenty-six and in twenty-eight, which Dave will talk about once we get to the five-year. Um, you'll see that we anticipate two hundred and thirty-six thousand revenue coming in for the trade-in and sale of golf carts. Cause that will be a capital expense for next year. We're, we're replacing a hundred and ten golf carts. That's one of our biggest capital investments next year. Um, will be hitting us. Um, you'll notice for our expense, there is a very small reduction, um, in the headcount. And that's really for our seasonal snow tech technicians, not really a change in headcount, it's just a change in the allocation. We're moving that expense over to the Nordic department, which rolls up under the rec program of the general fund. Um, the, uh.
I'm sorry, one of the things as well, when you look at expense by program, that you'll see it being zero in admin and equipment maintenance, but that's just rolling into office maintenance. So we're just consolidating into one department. So it's not zero, but it's just moving down to another, another department.
As far as the restrictions for fixed assets, I want to, uh, thank Grant Johnson and, uh, Michael Magnuson, who spent a lot of time with me this year going through a full inventory of the golf course and building out their pro forma. So you see a representation in this budget of the next five-year plans of capital projects. Um, whether it's a new equipment or work that's being done at the golf course to improve the offering. And this is just what we have planned out for five years. So they had, again, had to spend a lot of time with me going through their inventory to get that, uh, up to snuff. And a pro forma for their capital. Uh, we also have the fee schedule in here for your information, but there is no changes in twenty twenty-five at all.
Do we? If there's no changes, do we approve the current fees?
Okay.
Approved as part of the budget.
Okay.
Questions on golf before we move over to marketing? All right. There we go. Marketing fund. Um, this one receives an allocation for the accommodation tax and sales tax. Um, if this fund needed any more money, we would do a transfer from excise, but that is not needed. As you can see from the fund balance of seven million, we do not need any additional funds. The, the main expense in this, uh, fund is five point four million, and that is the funding that we provide to BTO. Uh, there was a new department that we, uh, created in twenty twenty-four, which is the, uh, community engagement. That was a new program that is really to stand up Helen and her team to kind of, uh, put that dominance and that centralization of the marketing, um, for the town under her responsibility.
And just one thing, even though, excuse me, my voice is gone. Um, even though you see a seven point three million dollar fund balance today or in twenty-five, when you look out five years, we're eating into that. Cause the revenue's not growing and the expenses are. So it gets, you know, by twenty twenty-nine, um, it gets, I think it's below a million dollars. Just to, we're going to be keeping an eye on that fund balance in this fund.
And it does presume no growth. And so.
Well, that's true.
You know, I think that there may be a lot of things changing in that landscape. And like Dave said, we should keep an eye on it. Um, so we're hopeful we will see a bit of growth with the changes that BTO is making. And then maybe not as much need for funding if things get to the level where we feel like they need to be.
Moving on to capital. So, uh, the capital, I do have it broken down, um, that shows the transfers that we have coming from other funds. And that is to fund the CIP that is in their area. Um, this is one grant we are also showing of three hundred thousand. Um, we only put grant revenue in when we know it is confirmed. We, uh, we don't put any potential ones in. And this three hundred thousand grant is expected for the MMOI grant, which is the multimodal transportation and mitigation options fund. I know it's a long one. Um, as far as expenses, we have the, following the schedule is the adjusted CIP. So when we met last month, uh, there was quite a difference to the old, to the original CIP to what we ended up. So, um, it ended up taking out, ooh, let's see, about thirty-four million from the full CIPs planned over the next five years. Some of those projects were either removed or pushed out into future years. Um, so you'll see that the twenty-one point seven million expense, that considers a six point five rollover from this year. So those are projects that were approved that still have work to be completed on them. So we're just really going for a reapproval of that six point, uh, five, along with the, uh, projects of seventeen point four million that are planned in twenty twenty-five. Uh, there's also the restriction in here for the two years of nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, and that's for the fiber COP that we will be paying through twenty thirty-nine.
And you've got the new CIP from the work done a month ago and, and behind this, uh, capital fund roll-up. If you, there's any questions with that, but that, that's from the meeting we had.
Any questions? Our questions?
Okay, utility. Okay, um, there is a revenue of three million dollars grant. And that is, we're getting two millions from the state revolving fund and one million for DOLA. And that is to complete the water meter installation that is planned for next year. Um, there's also a ten percent increase in our water rents and PIFs. The water, uh, rate fee sheet is behind this schedule, um, for James or his team to add any color to. Uh, there is also a transfer from housing, and that is to support the utility work for stables. And there's also a transfer that I mentioned earlier from open space of like twenty grand, and that's for the open space water usage. Um, there is a new allocation of seventy-one thousand. We'll see the line for the internal water service. So this is a new allocation that we're introducing for twenty-five budget. And that's where we are charging, uh, departments in certain buildings, uh, for their water usage. You know, we allocate out for IT and facilities. So this is very similar in that, that we want to put some of those expenses back to those departments to add that revenue to, to the utility for the water usage.
And it's based on the meter usage that does happen. Yep.
Uh, for expenses, um, there was a part-time head remove for the water administrative, uh, role. Um, and as far as the, uh, CIP again in the schedule behind, um, I do want to thank James and Laura. Um, for again, working with me over the last year to go through an inventory of, um, not only all of the assets that we have, which was insanely vast, um, but this is also the pro forma for the projects that we have planned in the next five years. That will be expensed to the utility, uh, fund. Uh, within this, uh, fund, we also have the debt service of the two years, and that's for the water treatment plant. And which goes through twenty thirty-nine and then the goose past, goose pasture tarn dam. And that, uh, COP goes through twenty fifty-two.
And you've got the water rates here that are reflective of the study that was done last year, I want to say. Uh, we adopted last, last year? Yep.
Yeah. James, are you comfortable with where we are on the pro forma that the consultant provided for us at this point with these rates? Where the fund balances are, et cetera, et cetera?
Uh, we do remain optimistic, Dick. Um, you know, that, when we modeled that out, we were making some assumptions certainly. But right now our revenues, you know, kind of based on what that study projected. I think we're hitting and excelling in some of the areas and some of that recovery. Um, I think staying the course, obviously, as we adopted that five-year plan through twenty twenty-seven, we'll plan on coming back as part of that development of that twenty twenty budget, certainly. And see if we need to retain some rents and PIF increases as part of that. But, you know, even as the pro forma shows, there are still a number of projects that remain that need to be upgraded in the system. So we're closely watching revenues, um, as far as a way to capture, um, dollars to, to sell those projects.
But right now you're comfortable? Okay. Any other question?
There's, excuse me, go ahead.
James, um, under the, and this might look somewhere else, but under utility projects, is the Wellington Oro, uh, project in your world?
Um, it lives somewhat in the water world and somewhat in open space. So it's, it's kind of split in, in, um, responsibility. Um, do you have a question?
If, if we're going to spend money to redo that or look for, uh, different options, uh, for that, where, where's that expense, um, taken?
Again, um, Jay, some of that expense will come out of both of those, those different, um, areas, water and open space. Right now we are doing a study on that, looking for, um, an opportunity to do passive treatment on that versus the treatment, um, that we do, um, currently for that, um, industrial water. We're very, again, remain optimistic that we are going to find a way to do passive treatment of that industrial wastewater. And if we are able to achieve that through this, um, um, investigation, then that will effectively, um, provide some more, um, free board or some, um, ability for our water folks to focus on clean drinking water versus industrial wastewater.
Good.
I'm good. Big, big numbers in this one.
This scheduling, excuse me, Tracy, you need to go with the schedule.
No, this is yours. You do. Maybe you put it in, so I'm going to make him talk to it.
I'm sorry. Sorry, it's my granddaughter got me sick. Um, when, um, this is a schedule or our water treatment plant, um, that we need to keep track of, which is basically, we need to have a net income that is able to have a hundred and ten percent KPI for the debt that we're carrying, uh, for the, for those loans. As you can tell in twenty-two, we were not there. So when we talk about the water increases for the water rents, that is definitely helping us out moving forward into the future. Um, and also we've had the benefit of interest income, which has been allocated to the water fund. But we need to keep an eye on this as we carry on because we do have those covenants. And this is just to show you, we're in good shape right now, looking out the next five years, based on these assumptions.
I am away with a typo on that heading as well. That will get fixed.
I'm going to step out. Tracy, you.
Sure. Okey dokey. Moving on to the general fund. Um, let's get down here. So just want to quickly look at the analysis, this roll-up, um, of the summary of all of the departments who roll up under the general fund. Um, you'll see that we end up with a fund balance before restrictions of twenty million dollars, um, in this one. But after restrictions takes it down to six point four, we do have the restriction for the loan to break NORDIT. The EDAP, uh, so we anticipate, um, the hundred thousand dollar loan per employee. Um, we are considering another five of those loans next year. Right now we are hoping to finish out twenty twenty-four with six loans, twenty twenty-five, that will bring it up to eleven loans. Uh, they do rate, uh, pay us back about five thousand dollars a year on that, but that will be our exposure on those loans. And then we, uh, restrict four months' worth of operational expense within the general fund. A couple of smaller reserves, that's where we've got the reserves in the savings account. Um, and that is, uh, for Tabor, which is the tax bill of, bill of rights, taxpayer, taxpayer bill of rights. Um, and that we reserve three percent, um, of our revenue net of taxes and fees is the calculation that sits behind that. We sit in a reserve account. Uh, we also hold in reserve, uh, the net income for our nicotine program. Cover the next schedules really are just a roll-up of revenue by source and the expenditures by program, but I'd rather focus on the each individual program.
Okay.
Okay, uh, so, uh, our general government, this is made up of, uh, we are changing the name of law and policymaking department to actually town council department. Uh, municipal court and a vice and litigation. Um, the only thing to highlight in, in this general, general is the, uh, change in personnel. And that is the town attorney in twenty twenty-four was considered a contracted services position. And that is being brought back as a full-time head in twenty twenty-five. Moving on to executive and, um, management, you'll see that our revenue for nicotine tax, um, remains flat. Uh, there is also, uh, rental income, uh, that is for the brick professional building. Um, and that is where we charge our, uh, some of that space, uh, that is used by housing and our marketing team. They pay an allocation versus for the rest of the building that they actually pay rent for our outside, um, companies that have space in the brick professional building. Uh, for expenses, uh, you'll see that there is a pickup in this department by a couple of heads. And that is for the, uh, the, uh, senior project manager. I don't know the official title yet, but that's kind of the assistant to, uh, to Shannon. And there's also a new head, uh, for the town clerk that will be in this area too. Um, there is, uh, a, uh, fixed charges, sorry, not that line. Um, and then you'll see that there is a transfer expense in here, which is new for forty-eight thousand. Uh, we are going to be charging the brick professional building department. Um, and that, uh, money goes over to the facilities department. That's also part of the general fund, but under public works. And that is to help with the expense, um, of headcount for that Matt's team spends. of headcount for that Matt's team spends on working on the brick professional building. So that's.
And so we're basically taking, I got my voice, we're basically taking care of the building and we're, we want facilities to get reimbursed a commercial rate for the work that they spend over there for the tenants that are there. So that's a change we made this year going forward into twenty five, so they could track their hours and we could start getting recoup for it.
One thing I want to call out is in the in the highlights where we've, you know, I spoke about the two new heads that we have for the assistant to Shannon and the town clerk. It doesn't show two, it shows one point four two, because then we've got the reduction of the retiring of Rick's position that will be that's not part of that twenty five budget.
Very sad.
So I know I've talked to you, a couple of you about the new position in the manager's office. And you know, what we, I think back to our talking about our growth and the kinds of projects and the complexity of projects and and things that are being handled by town staff. What we've definitely realized with having Rick here for the portion of this year is having someone at a high level to have, that has the ability to take on some projects that would be time consuming for either Scott or I to take on, but not necessarily projects that we need to be involved in. And I think the Excel L N G injection site is one of those that I could point to as something that would have taken either one of us a fair amount of time that we don't necessarily need to be involved, but it does take someone who understands those kinds of relationships and being able to navigate a relationship between Excel and the county who aren't necessarily seeing eye to eye. And so I think for a variety of reasons, it's, I think it's important to have a position like that in the manager's office. So it's just a kind of a quick overview of the rationale behind it, but I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have.
That's great.
Thank you. And then Helen is adding the town clerk position, which probably takes a little bit of explanation since we have a town clerk. So Helen, I'll turn it over to you to to talk about that a bit.
Well, as you've noticed, the town clerk position started as town clerk and it's grown to be the director of municipal services and community engagement. And in doing so, what we discovered is that the specific town clerk duties, which are extremely detail oriented and law specific, really need to live with one particular individual who would manage the legislative actions, the council prep and follow up and oversee the deputy clerk for liquor licenses, of which we have more than most small municipalities at about a hundred and twenty marijuana licenses, tobacco licenses and cemetery.
Helen also had, because of this change we made to the adding the communications division and having the muni muni services, the way it's set up right now, Helen has all those folks as direct reports. So in addition to sort of the detailed work of the town clerk that she has to do now, she also has a wide span of control. And so this helps to narrow that span of control a bit and allow her to focus on the things that we need her to focus on. Especially when the town clerk role can get so tied up in, say, an election and we need her to be doing.
Makes a ton of sense. Just that major is so important. Any questions?
So will that change your allocation, your F T E allocation of where you are like? Right now, like half of you, there's point five F T associated with you and communications, point five in general as clerk or wherever that lives in general. Will that change?
No, that allocation will stay the same because the town clerk position would be under municipal services. So mine would stay the same, allocated between municipal services and community outreach. And I'd still be over all of them. Yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
Finance, okay, go to the next one.
Let's take a closer look. There's no changes in fees. There's nothing we need to highlight in finance. Moving on to public safety, a couple of things to to call out. You'll see that there is, it looks like a headcount change, but that's part of that point seven headcount from the marijuana fund allocation for the detective that is rolled back into public safety. We also have an expense in here of three hundred and seventy thousand for the cost sharing for the nine eleven center. And when we come back in a next month, there will also be an additional fifty thousand that expense that is our part in the countywide evacuation planning assessment. That was a request that came in just a little too late to make it into this budget. But it will be in the the one we asked for adopt for adoption.
And then I just wanted to take a few minutes just to explain the comm center increase. It's it's going up by like eighty eighty five percent. And so I just wanted to kind of explain a little bit about why. In twenty twenty three, we completed an assessment of the nine one one center. Out of that assessment, it towards the end of twenty twenty three, we had several recommendations. Mostly involved price tags as well, but one of the biggest ones was a significant increase in staffing. And so that obviously feeds an increase in expenditures that goes along with that. However, because the decisions were made by the nine one one board and the B O C C kind of late in twenty twenty three, when we adopted the twenty twenty four budget, we chose to use some reserves associated with the comm center just to offset the first year. So although it's a significant increase over twenty twenty four, twenty twenty four was kind of artificially low, and this is more of a true cost going forward.
Thanks for that explanation. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Okay, community development. You'll see the next schedule has got the change in fees. There's just very minor adjustments that have been highlighted in red in the fee schedule. The only other highlight I had for you is in the personnel. There is, it looks like a slight increase in our personnel, but that's that allocation of Mark and Julia that was coming out in that previous fund that we've adjusted into com dev.
And I think an intern, right? Don't you have point three six or point three two in there for a part time intern?
Yes.
Guys, have any questions on com dev or questions for Mark?
Move. I thought we moved some of Mark and Julia's time out of here and into open space.
Yeah, I think so. That's why it goes from eleven point nine to eleven point seven five.
Okay.
So that the full time piece went down and then they added the point three two.
I see. Okay, any questions for Mark?
Moving on to. I do present public works at a high level as a department, but if you really want the revenue by source, that would be one of the earliest schedules. I don't build it in this one, otherwise it would make this page horribly long. But if you do want the details behind these revenues, that earlier schedule breaks breaks it down. From an expenditure call out for the personnel costs, you'll see that there's that's increased by six hundred and seventy thousand. And that is for four new roles that are being added to public works. There is, and don't hold me to the titles, because these are the just titles that we got from H R, which may not be the official new titles. But it would be an admin services coordinator that's part of the admin department. And then we have a new streets operator, a new streets and parks operator, and a new facilities operator.
So Tracy, maybe James could speak to the personnel items while we're on them. Because they, as Kelly realized, they don't, not everything adds up exactly. And so there's some half people and whatnot going on in that. So I think, one, it's important for James to clarify exactly what we're adding and two, to say very briefly, why we need to add the positions.
Thank you for that. If if we go all the way back to the beginning of this presentation, there was actually five. Five and one of the positions is coming is in water, so it's back in zero zero two fund. And so there's actually five in public works, which are the divisions of all represented here of public works. For the facilities and the streets and the parks and water, it's really, you know, the explanation for the addition is really a function of of increased service level or service areas. And with each year that certainly council knows, with each year that a budget is developed, we're for public works specifically, we're always adding service area, whether this year it's going to be stables and the year before was you know, all those years that we did that in the Highlands. But with all those lane miles, that's the metric that we use in streets and parks sidewalks is another metric. And for all those additional linear feet or or miles translates into a formula, which then in turn gets evaluated for the need to add additional personnel to maintain our service levels. So that those discussions started earlier in the season with the manager's office and we, public works presents, you know, at least initially the idea that we'll be looking to add personnel. Facilities is probably the easiest one to to really address and and that was really the additional individual in facilities is really to address the parking garage, parking garage and the pro building. The pro building's new and we've bought a couple of other areas that that really require those those areas of additional personnel. Specifically to the to the one admin services coordinator. That is a position that we are, that has been previously paid for by the water utility. And was and the water utility wasn't real, you know, due to really compliance and reporting, as with a lot of, with both water and sand services, there's been increased state regulation, compliance, reporting programs that have been put on these bigger utilities. And right now in our water division, as most of you know, from previous discussions, which I won't go into great detail, but we've had some backflow. We had a back, we currently have a backflow compliance program. And a couple of years ago, we were, we were found to be just a little bit behind in compliance. So as part of the twenty twenty four budget, council approved a backflow, seasonal backflow position. We were not successful in filling that position this year, so that point six, we're coupling a point four request to get to one F T that will be solely in the water division and help with some of the the compliance of not only that program, but some of the other areas that we need to follow the programs and do reports. So one of those positions that's not shown as part of that, this highlighted box right here is actually in 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 water. And then in turn, the admin services one that's shown there is really just filling a position that or just really a shell game of sorts that we have a person in public works right now and we're just gonna, and that individual will remain in public works. So hopefully that helps. And I'm happy to take any additional questions.
I have a question, but I'm not sure if it was answered already. Sorry if it was. But in the expenditures by program, in twenty twenty five, streets and parks are both going down? And I was just curious why that is.
That's predominantly because of the allocation. You'll see this note or highlight in many of the departments here where I've got the allocation reduction for the change of methodology for garage and facilities. So because those departments primarily had a very high amount of equipment and vehicles, they are no longer paying for those allocations coming out of the exercise fund, so you're going to see those drops.
So that's where that's, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The other thing that would be good to point out on the professional building is previously we were paying an outside contractor twenty five to thirty thousand dollars a year. And so we're paying ourselves.
So we're doing all the leasing and everything now?
No, so we still, well, we're doing half and half of the leasing. So we are using Larry Hutton to list the properties and do all the M L S type stuff and get people lined up. And then Scott and Dave are working to actually get the leases executed.
Great.
Any other questions for public works? I know it is a big one. Shell games. They're doing a lot of, a lot of work in public works.
Thank you.
Moving on to rec, same thing. I've got it summarized by program. If you want the full details, that's listed under the revenue by source schedule that was.
Just on the fees, there was an increase in the public works fees for the memorial bench and plaque fee. It went from nine hundred dollars to a thousand dollars. Are you all good with that? Do you have any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. For rec, there is a slight revenue growth that we are showing. The schedule behind has got the changes in the rec fees that are highlighted in red, so I'll leave that to Kevin to speak to.
So most of these fees are like the very first one that you see is just getting stuff lined up better that not been right in the past as far as like the six punch guest pass and the fifteen punch guest pass. The fifteen punch guest pass shouldn't really be a bigger discount than the six punch as far as a percentage basis. This isn't just a pass that we sell to folks that that come in for a week. You know, it's me and two buddies here skiing and we want to go to the rec center twice, so we might buy the six punch transferable, save twenty bucks. If a little bit bigger, like family or reunion or something, you'd, we'd steer folks to the fifteen punch. So we just wanted to get this fifteen punch in line with the six punch there. Towel fees, that's as far as the towel monthly add on, that's just an increase in cost of our towels that we've seen over the last couple of years. And then as far as individual fees, same thing, increasing in the cost of the towels as well as just wear and tear. We do a lot of laundry every day, so at some point we're going to be looking at new commercial washing machines and dryers. Few other ones, dime, ball diamonds, athletic fields. We, well, first, we just spent a lot of money on two really nice new fields, so we want to capture a little bit of that. And because we knew that that was on the horizon a few years ago, we we are old fees, we've held them pretty steady for the last several years. So this is a, this is a catch up for field rentals. Outdoor court pass, that's also just a catch up. We want to keep that that pass at about like between sixteen and twenty visits to break even for use of the outdoor tennis hard and clay courts in the in the summertime. So that's just getting that one again caught up. And then I think ice was just seven percent. I don't have my ice one with me, sorry. But ice was, oh, yeah, thank you. Those are all seven percent and and again, that's we look at our ice rental rates every two years, do comparisons with other municipalities. We are still very competitive at those prices, but we wanted to do just an incremental increase there as well.
One of the things I didn't notice and was just kind of curious about looking at the fees were locker rentals. I didn't see them, but they were in there.
Oh, in the fee sheet.
In, yeah, in the fee sheet.
For locker rentals at the ice rink or at the rec center?
At the rec center or the ice rink, I guess. They have both.
Yeah, I don't have an answer for that. Why, why we don't have those in there?
Wouldn't locker rooms come with ice rental?
No, he's, he's talking the locker, the long term locker, storage.
Individual rentals.
I can get those in here, but we we don't have any changes on them, so.
Any other questions or concerns about the rec fee sheets? Are you good?
Yeah, I just am curious. Do we do a lot like I was trying to remember from my time on grants of in kind. Granting of the field time.
Yes, a lot.
I really support that. I I mean, with ice and things like that, you know, there are daily expenses that make a lot of sense, but. And certainly at some point we'll have to. Do maintenance on the turf and eventually replace it, but. I do. I don't know some I. I think it's a good way to support our nonprofits by trying to make the. Fields at the rec center as affordable as possible for them, but maybe I'm on my own in that. Thinking.
No, I think that's really important.
For youth programs.
Yeah.
Ice as well.
Yeah. I just, I guess when I was. And of course we do have maintenance costs, but when we gave that money for the rec center fields, I didn't really think about recouping costs. From, you know, the youth programs and things like that. I don't feel super comfortable with that. But I do realize that there are expenses of maintaining those areas. So as long as the recoup is as. Minimal as possible and we're supporting them in ways, I think that we can understand some level of payment, but hopefully it's not. In excess at all.
And with the grant process coming up, we can.
Consider that.
Look at those numbers of hours from the past and maybe. You know, take that into consideration with the long time.
Right.
Grantees, if you will.
That's great. I think that's certainly what we intended those places for to be for. Any other? Thoughts, questions? Thank you very much.
The last thing to call out in the rec program is the benefit of six hundred odd thousand you'll see is reduction in allocation. And that's for the garage and facilities that will no longer be expense to this department. Moving on to our other miscellaneous department within here, that is really made up of contingencies. Which really handles our general property taxes and that what we've got budgeted or proposed for 2025 for property taxes based on the. Summit County Assessors Office. Of that five, just slightly over five million dollars. The other area in here is the debt service that we carry in here for the fiber. COP that is payable through 2039 committees is also a department that lives under this area. Okay, so the next schedule is presents the the roll up at two different levels. The first one is. The revenue expenditure summary, and that includes all of our transfers. The next schedule is exactly the same, but we strip out all of those transfers because that does over obviously inflate. Inflate revenue and inflate expenses. So I don't know which one you want to look at. I would always. Say that looking for the net of of transfers is probably the most realistic one to consider. So it's just money moving back and forth. One thing I do, I do want to call out, and that is you'll see that our personnel costs, if we look at going back from 2022. To the proposed 2025 at 2022, we had twenty eight point five million in personnel expense. It increased by thirty nine percent for our proposed 2025 budget up to just a few dollars under forty million. That is obviously not only for growth of headcount. But it also considers the pay increases that we as employees have benefited from. Moving forward in the five year one, we only have built in a four point five personnel increase over the next five years, but that is something to kind of speak to. You will notice that right at the go back one. Thank you. Right at the bottom. Where we finish out 2025 is at a seventeen point six million dollar loss, which is really where our. Expenses are just seventeen point six million higher than our revenue, but we'll talk about the discretionary roll up once we get to the five year one. So that, you know, is not a concern at all. For the projections for 2024. This does give you a presentation of the roll up. Everything is looking pretty good. And I know we meet every month to go through the financial statements at a monthly level. I would anticipate there would be an appropriation potentially in the workforce housing. For the end that will be coming to you in December, but we've got to figure out where we are for financials over the next couple of months, come back with a. Real number, if that's something that we will be needing. This is a again, my graph lovers, something to to just point out. This year we have twenty six percent of our expenses as a roll up for the town is for personnel. If we look back in 2022, that was at twenty three percent. Committing a lot of money to minor capital, the investment to the town is thirty five percent, which I believe is one of the higher percentages that we have seen. In recent years of the investments that you're making to improve. The fund a summary fund balance schedule. This does include transfers. In this, so you've got that estimated ending balance, which shows that we are looking at right around that eighty four million in fund balance total across everybody. The next schedule is showing the assessed valuation. From the mill levy, we anticipate in 2025, there is just a slight. Drop to 2024 going from five point three down to five million. And then the final schedule I'm going to talk about before we hit the five year is just the roll up of our headcount by department. So that's where you'll see that growth from prior years to this proposed year of that seven point five eight. Full time equivalent is what we are proposing.
It was a lot really fast. Do you guys have any questions for Tracy? And any of that stuff?
Excuse me. One thing you pointed out that I thought was. Pretty notable is that even though personnel costs have gone up. In dollars quite a bit, it's only three percent different than what it was in our budget. In 2022.
A total. Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, really, if you look at, if you if you pull out the. The FTEs of change from twenty two to now, that's really it takes about two million dollars just for those. And then the rest would be. The pay increases.
Okay, thank you, Tracy. Now we're going to jump back into the five year and kind of give a roll up of where we're looking at right now.
If can I just, are you guys okay if we just kind of push on? Okay. All right.
Will be fast. So. Just a reminder of the assumptions, we went through these before about a month ago. We're growing sales and accommodation tax one percent annually. Hopefully that becomes more than that, but that's what we're going with. For the five year, we're keeping rep flat. Property taxes, we're keeping flat. I know there's been legislation that's been passed. Well, we're kind of working with some, trying to see how they do that, but basically. If the increases are higher than I think ten percent, we might have to address our mill levy going forward to keep it below that cap. So but right now we're just going to keep it flat from this perspective on the five year. Regulatory compliance fee, we're still going to show a reduction of one and a half percent due to loss of licenses. We're we're seeing a slow. But steady loss of licenses every year regarding that program. E delivery, we talked a little bit earlier about that, but it's fifty percent of contracted expense going forward. Reduced investment income part of is reduced interest rates, part of it is going to be less cash to invest. Parking income, we're going to continue to keep a growth of three percent annually lift ticket tax. Tracy walked through that logic. But we're going to keep it at three percent to conservatively based upon CPI. Golf is, you know, they're in, they're not increasing the fees every year in the five year. They're going to do a break in twenty five and then do. Twenty six, a break in twenty seven and twenty eight, another increase of five percent. So two out of the next five years will have an increase in golf green fees. Marijuana, we're going to keep reducing it about eight percent annually. We'll see what happens with that. And unless we have grants in stone, we're those, they're not in here. I know there could be some grants coming along. But we're keeping that out for now. Our personnel costs. We're keeping the four and a half percent marriage across the board. No new FTEs. We've Tracy alluded to, I think we've grown eighteen FTEs since two thousand twenty two. So if we look at going forward, we're sticking with twenty twenty five FTEs for the next five years in these assumptions. General fund grows. You know, it's it's a modest growth from twenty four to twenty nine. More modest than what we've been experiencing in the general fund from prior years to where we are today. But that's based upon the assumptions we have. We do have a five percent inflation factor. Healthcare, we we put in a conservative two percent increase annually. Hopefully we can, you know, keep it to that level. We've gone through the CapEx, but those are all based on the all the different funds and the capital expense for those funds and the pro formas. Housing five year plan is based on the pro forma as well. And we talked about the excise fund elimination for childcare already. Rec create, we've spoke of, we're keeping that at four percent growth every year. And then the allocation logic change, we're going to keep consistent across the board. We did talk about restrictions before. We'll look at the housing one to see if we can make a change there and. Everything else is pretty well consistent to what we've had in the past. So if we look at the busy schedules, Tracy's busy schedule, but the roll up, I like to look at net of transfers. So if we look at. Just a high level view. We are, as we talked about this year for 2024, we're about nine point seven million deficit of. Cash, if we look at revenues minus expenses. This 2025 budget is seventeen point seven. A lot of that's due to the CIP that we're moving forward with in twenty five. Twenty six takes a dip in our spending from our CIP levels. So. We've got a surplus there and then we're kind of close to breaking even afterwards. And so a lot of that is due to the work that was done. Last town council meeting and that's kind of a, you look at our total expenditures over around one thirty five. You look at our total revenues at around one thirty five and, you know, we're not growing revenue aggressively in the out years. You know, we're keeping it, if you look between, starting from twenty twenty two, two is a bit of anomaly for housing projects, but if you look. Just in a normal course and speed. We've been hovering around one thirty five, give or take in revenues. There's a lot of ins and outs in that, but it's a pretty consistent number. And so our expenses, we're trying to keep in line with that as well. And as we mentioned before. Our CIP is one way we can help manage to that number, which is what this shows. Getting to. Our personnel growth, this is kind of gives you what Tracy was talking to before of looking at where we were in twenty two. And how we're looking to be in twenty nine. So roughly. I don't know, twenty nine million, probably in twenty two, going up to around forty five million in twenty nine, and that's really based upon the four and a half percent growth. You'll see the purple line here for expenditures by class. I'm talking fast, so slow me down if you need me to. If you look at the purple line here on the expenditures from classification, that's our minor capital. So it just shows the drop we're taking. We're taking a little bit of a spike in twenty five as we went through. But then we take it back down in twenty six and we're keeping it relatively flat going forward. So that's the result of the work that was done before as well.
I think the one thing on personnel that I'd just like to point out, and I think there's a lot of variables with personnel. You know, us coming in, planning to be fully staffed at the beginning of the year is one kind of philosophy we take. Tracy also allocates out merit increases true to anniversary dates, and so that helps us. Really have a better look instead of assuming not only will we fully staffed, but everybody's getting their merit increase at the first of the year, which doesn't happen. So. That helps us with that number. I think the other, another thing I want to point out in this assumption is that we keep. All of our staff, which would be wonderful if we could do that, but that is not always what happens. And so it assumes your. Everyone's getting paid at the rate they're getting paid now, and some people are going to go up because they are going to stay and some people will hire new. And so we'll also have some lower wages. So it's, I think, our best guess at what that will look like, but there could be some mitigators in there as well.
So this is our schedule we looked at before last month and kind of an updated how things are rolling today. So if we look at. How our cash flow is tracking, you know, we're much closer. To a net breakeven and then in the five year view, we do have our other cash outs that we do have that are not a part of the income statement capturing here, but. You know, now we're kind of bleeding into cash at around thirty seven million. Which is a lot better than where we were before. And if we go down to kind of our year in cash balance, we're still looking at around. Hundred and sixty five million this year by the end of twenty twenty four in cash. And that's cash and investments. That's all of our liquidity that we have. And just our our reductions. And we go up a little bit in twenty six, but then continued reductions down to about a hundred and forty one million. And as Shannon alluded to before, our target's around one thirty five. That's we we talked about that last month is a good KPI. That we want to keep track of and and so we're in the green right now, which is great. We've got a little bit of variability here in this orange line here of. Of where we're looking at cash versus our KPI. So and as we discussed, we'll look at could be housing projects or it could be other capital projects that. You know, need to come in and be looked at, but this kind of gives an idea of how we're tracking. So we can assuming we're tracking good to to the budget in that particular twenty five or twenty six, where we might want to bring some other projects in. This is kind of the eyeball that we'll be looking at from that perspective. But right now we're we're tracking a lot better than we were before. I do want to call out. On our policy restrictions with this used to be about eighty five million last month, but as we've cut down the. The CIP that went down from about forty five, forty eight million down to twenty two. So it's taken that number down a little bit there as a as a result of that. And once again, if we update the housing one, that'll take that down a little bit more too from that perspective, but. Overall, I think, you know, we're in a much better shape than we were. A month ago. Which is great. This is our fun schedule over five years. So this kind of goes back to Tracy's first slide, which talks about. How we break up the town's funds between discretion, well, government, special revenue proprietary and under proprietary, we have enterprise. And internal services. I eyeball these fund balances as we kind of look and see how we're tracking. And based and these are all after restrictions. So. Our discretionary fund balance is has gone up quite a bit. It used to run around twenty five million and I'm talking about the sum of. General through capital on that first batch there. It used to run about twenty twenty to twenty five million. It's growing. Part of that is our restrictions have been reducing. For our capital projects, which makes us have more money. That's in our discretionary fund balance. And but it's growing from. Forty three million at the end of twenty five. Up to seventy million plus at the end of. Twenty twenty nine, based upon how we sit today. When we looked at the cash flow, we I look at this and the cash flow because. The cash flow is all the funds, not just the breakup of the fund. So we have to look at that, I think, more critically than this, but. This does show some flexibility there. When I look at the fund balances, the one thing I will note here is Tracy kind of talked about. How we want to track different fund balances going forward. You know, we have marijuana fund, if I'm looking at that right. Yeah, it gets pretty low down to ten thousand. So we'll have to. Keep an eye on that because we're continuing to transfer the money to the house to the childcare fund. And then the childcare fund is as well. Am I looking at that right? Yeah. So it it continues to go down as well. So we're getting close to a fund balance. We're not in the red. But we're our balances as we get out the five years are reducing. Even though our excise fund is doing fine, we are, you know, keep an eye out on these funds as based upon the allocations that come in. The parking and transportation, that one, we have flexibility to make a change on in twenty nine. You know, that, you know, by doing a change there, we'd we put more money back up into the excise. Because that is what that's what's driving that seven point eight million, seven point three million, but it does not need to be that high. Because that is what, that's what's driving that seven point eight million, seven point three million, but it does not need to be that high. We usually try to keep it between one and a half to two million on parking. And then, as we talked about sustainability, Tracy says around two, two million at the end of twenty-five. But it does, we do have it coming down. So in the out years to just under a million dollars. And then the capital fund, we try to keep it consistent, usually under a half million. So this is kind of a fund view where we sit right now for discretionary. Then on special revenue, the one thing that I would say there is, as Tracy mentioned, we try to keep our accommodation unit compliance basically zero. We'll restrict whatever's there, but most of that will go to workforce housing. And then workforce housing, we keep it light as well because we tend to spend pretty much everything that comes through. And depending on what happens with what they need, we'll start reimbursing the excise fund back, which does start to happen in twenty-eight. That's why the excise fund is starting to grow back as well. Housing's paying excise back. Open space, we're hovering around two and a half to three million. It does slowly go down to around two point four million by two thousand twenty-nine. Marketing, I talked about earlier, where it's seven point two million at the end of twenty-five. But it does go down to six hundred and one thousand by the end of twenty-nine. And that's really based upon costs versus the revenues that come through for for marketing. And if we have more return on what's happening with that, then the revenues will go up and we should be okay. But we'll keep an eye on that one. And then conservation trusts, we talked about is pretty much we keep it relatively low. On utility, we have it going down. We have a lot of capital projects going on in utility. But right now, it's looking like we are going to be able to maintain a fund balance, positive fund balance over the next five years, based upon the CIP that we looked at a little bit ago for utility, plus the water rent increases that we have for the revenue. And then on golf.
And just on water utility, you'll recall that in the CIP, you've got about thirty million dollars worth of capital improvement projects to the Gary Roberts plant.
Golf is another one we're keeping our eye on. It's it's slowly going down, but there's a lot of capital projects for golf as well over the next five years. So depending on where this is starting to look at, this one, you know, we need, it's got to stay positive as an enterprise fund and as does utility. So with this, you know, we'll keep our eye out on that as we move down the road. Cemetery is relatively flat. And then on our internal services, the one thing I'll mention is Tracy talked about earlier, we're showing an eight point one million dollar ending fund balance in two thousand twenty-five. We're going to take that down about two point two million for the capital that we need to put in for the buses and a few cars. And then our goal is going to be to get it to ten million by the end of twenty-nine, just to cover the ongoing projects we have for the garage fund, the capital purchases. So if we need to fund more out of excise fund, we have plenty to do that to get that balance where it needs to be. The same thing on facilities, it slowly grows, but the goal will be to get that to ten million. Once again, we could, we have plenty of excise to get there if we need to do it immediately.
And just a reminder on the garage fund, we also have that eight million dollar grant for EV buses. And so that will offset purchases, not the two hybrids that they mentioned earlier, but EV buses that are scheduled for future years. You probably saw in that garage garage fund capital list. So we'll get a lot of that covered by that eight million dollar grant.
Remind me, Shannon, that was a federal grant?
There were two, it was two grants, both federal.
Both federal?
Yeah, but.
Oh, one of each.
Yeah, so those aren't, that's not in this projection of her, from a revenue perspective.
It helps.
Oh, yeah. And then looking at our internal for IT and health benefits, they're running basically between one and one and a half million, which is where we want them to be. So we've got a good cushion there. I just want to call out the total fund balance. As we do runway, I don't know what's going to happen with that, but we had to jump in for the stables project. And with backing a loan for stables with First Bank. And I went to this schedule to show that we could do that. And and this number here is what I keep an eye on. So as we have some of our projects where we might have to stop and back a builder if we need to. We need to keep this balance where, you know, we've got some ability to do that. We don't restrict it. It was called out in the act for for the stables loan that we did earlier this year. But that's a, that's a number that we need to keep healthy, depending on what projects we have. If we have to back, you know, come in behind somebody to help get a project done. So this just gives us, I would say, a good, healthy fund balance as a town overall to make, maintain that. We talked about our debt schedule before. We're going to come back to do a kind of an overall income statement for our debt schedule. But Tracy talked a little bit about this before, under each, under each fund, basically where we have our our debts that we do have. But, you know, as of twenty-four going forward, we have about one hundred and seventy-three million we're still on the tab for. And so just to keep that into perspective, and that's why, you know, it wasn't advised to continue to grow that number like for runway. So if we can make that happen with our own funds, that would be a better, better choice for us than doing another COP. You have, you, well, we've been flying, but you have, sorry, I talk fast. You have every fund, most of the funds here in a five-year view. I covered at a high level, the revenue up above and the expenses as as an overview. And then also how we look from a cash perspective and an ending fund balance perspective. I I've I've got the general fund here. You know, as as we, this is really based on the assumptions that we went through at the beginning of the five-year. So, you know, we talked about personnel, you know, it's only from a general fund. We're we're just growing to twenty-six million from twenty-two million in two thousand twenty-five, where we grew from fifteen million to twenty twenty, to twenty-two million from twenty-two to twenty-five. We're only growing three million from twenty-five to twenty-nine. So we're we're slowing that growth down. There's really, I don't think any other things to really call out in the general fund roll up, but it's here if you have any questions. And I'll spend a minute or two. We do, we are on the EDAP, we're assuming roughly five loans a year going forward. And I would say with stables and with runway, that would probably continue. So that that's built into here. That's what that growth is there from that perspective. And nicotine, we're leaving basically flat. We'll have to see what happens. There could be some risk in that. I don't know. But that's, we're leaving that flat for now from from our income, from our nicotine program.
Risk because you think it'll go down?
Could be. I mean, I'm basing that from what Shannon's.
This coming year may be the last year of an increase that was built into the ballot question. So then it should flatten out. And we aren't seeing it here, but some of the other jurisdictions are seeing some of their stores stop selling nicotine and tobacco products. So we'll see if that happens here.
Why? Do you know?
No.
While we're on, are we seeing marijuana use going down too, or is it just the sale up? Because there's legal so many places. Do we, do we have a sense of that?
So I don't know if not, the PD not having contact with folks just means they're following the rules more about where they're using it. Or older and wiser. I don't, I don't know that we have an indication uses going down, but.
I was just curious. Yeah, it's hard to get data on that.
Dave, can you, and I tried to follow Tracy the first time around. And maybe just, can you explain taper one more time on what? I understand what it is. I don't understand why we have a line item for it, so.
It's required for us to have a line item for it, to have a reserve for taper.
And what would happen to have to use that money? I imagine it would be if we collected too much over.
You know, I think it's really short of everything else we have here. We need to have this minimum, minimum, I can't talk, minimum amount reserved.
Four months?
Well, that's the OpEx. That is the four months of the general fund. What's the formula you do on?
It is three percent of our net revenue. It's only certain lines of revenue. There's like a whole formula that I have to look at that considers some of our revenue lines and not others. And then we take a three percent of that.
A quick Google search, if you trust Jeffco. Jeffco's website says it can only be used for declared emergencies such as national disasters or public health pandemics.
Yeah, so we we have other reserves. If we didn't have those reserves or restrictions, whatever word you want to use, we, then this would be in a minimum that we have to have. Yeah, but we.
Ever used, touched it. Have we? What did we use it for? Oh, that's, so we've never touched it. Yeah, yeah. So we've never touched it.
It's a true up each year or to that number, but it doesn't adjust by that much.
Understood. Thank you.
This next schedule is just a general fund overview. You can see the programs that we just went through by every fund. But this is a overall expense view for those programs at the bottom. And there's really, I don't see, really, there's nothing dramatically happening other than our our assumptions that we have built into the five-year for these. So there's, I don't think there's really anything too terrible to caught out, call out there. But this gives you an overview of what those look like in the general fund. So on the budget, we end in the general fund and this we start with the general fund. And then the utility fund, you know, we do have the water rents increasing, as we talked about, ten percent a year. So that's the number. And then it plateaus out in twenty-eight and we, we really quit growing at that point in time. And but looking at the covenants, we're okay. But I do, as I mentioned before, we need to, you know, we need to keep an eye on that one. Basically, you know, depending on how this fund balance looks with all the projects that we do have, the capital projects in the future, beyond what we have through two thousand twenty-nine. So we definitely have to keep an eye on that moving forward. And, you know, and we do have the housing fund transfers coming through. So this this backup into the revenue section, those are continuing and those are based upon the housing projects that we have mainly for runway, but spread out over the three years. But so, you know, we're starting the year in a really good fund balance position for water utility, but we're, you know, we're spending it. So it's just a matter of, I think we'll be continuing to look at revenue streams based upon the capital needs that James will have going forward on utility. So we're okay for five, but we'll see what that looks like beyond five. On our capital, this is just our projects that we went through, you know, based upon the CIP. And as you can tell, they they do go down, but we'll see, you know, there's probably going to be some fluctuations in and out during the years. But that's what we have today. Going into the marketing fund. So as as we look at the revenue for marketing, it's really not growing. And it's the one percent for accommodation tax, which is not a lot of growth. And and our investment income slowly goes down. So revenues are kind of holding flat at about five point three million a year going out. But our expenses are are growing each year. And so as those continue to grow, we're going to eat into our fund balance. So we're going to have to really keep an eye on that one going forward. Golf, I mentioned as well, you can see a little bit of the green fees increasing in two thousand twenty-six and in two thousand twenty-eight. But other than that, our, I kind of call our golf revenues as, I mean, we're growing from four point seven million in twenty-five to four point seven million in in twenty-nine. So we're not really growing much in golf revenue in this, in this pro forma, in this five-year. And but we do have our capital expenses of around one and a half million a year in golf. And so that's gonna, that's going to eat into our fund balance. And so it's just something, once again, that this fund has to stand on its own two feet. And we just are going to have to keep looking at that and look and see what the future capital needs are for golf. Or we might have to look at what, how we can cure our revenue, which is increasing rates. Excise fund is our fund that we've got our good balances in, you know, when we weren't aggressive on our revenue. We, you know, we're just doing the one percent for the sales taxes every year. The one thing you do see in the excise fund in twenty-eight and twenty-nine, we're getting paid back from workforce housing based upon what they can afford. So we've got almost, what is that, nine, nine point seven, nine point six million coming back into the excise fund from housing in twenty-eight and twenty-nine as we stand today. Maybe. That, when the excise, when the workforce housing fund has a positive fund balance, they are paying back what they can to the excise fund because the excise fund, I think, will look, we get into around thirty million or thirty-two when we get to that. And so, you know, we're not calling it a loan. We're not charging interest on that, but we're just keeping, keeping track of what that receivable is. But if we have more housing projects, that payback would probably not happen or be reduced. And so we might come back with runway that might spend more housing money. We'll just have to see what that looks like. Thank you. Okay, workforce housing. So we talked about that before. As we can tell, the transfer from the excise fund is going down, which is great. The, well, we, yes, it's, it's good. It's going down a little bit. The accommodation unit compliance fund is slowly going down too. Other than that, everything, we're pretty much keeping consistent from a workforce housing perspective. You know, grants are fluctuating. We don't really keep grants in if we don't know what they are and we don't know what's going to happen for sure. So we don't have a lot of grants built in out into the future. But other than that, we we're keeping everything pretty consistent from a revenue perspective. And on the expenses, everything was driven by the CIP that we looked at before. Most of that is runway. We have money, I think, one and a half million dollars in two thousand twenty-eight for the loge infrastructure. I think that's what we talked about in our September tenth meeting. And then our four million for the workforce housing project. I'm sorry.
Fine.
Oh. Sorry, I'm looking, I'm looking. And we have four million in two thousand twenty-nine for public public works for workforce housing. But that's the projects that we have today that are really driving most of our expenses in the workforce housing. If you look at our loan or excise, well, call it the, it's not an official loan, but a loan. It does grow to thirty-five million. And so we have that being shaved off to about twenty-six, twenty-five point six million by twenty-nine. So to try to get that back. And then we also have the inventory number of units from Lori. So we're at seventeen sixty-one at the end of twenty-four and we'll be at twenty-one fifty-eight, based on these assumptions at the end of twenty-nine.
Awesome.
Open space, we're just keeping, you know, the revenues are relatively flat. I mean, three point nine nine oh in twenty-five and four point one by twenty-nine, that's flat in my, in my view. And our expenses are 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 maintaining at flat levels as well. We, we have, you know, we did six point three million in twenty-four in acquisitions. And we have four million budgeted in twenty-five, but then it drops down to about two million a year out afterwards. Now, of course, that could be variable, but that's what the assumptions are today. And based upon that, we, as we talked about before, we're keeping our fund balance at around, well, three million. Then it goes down to about two point four million by the end of two thousand twenty-nine.
Dave, is that four million for next year in minor capital? Is that earmarked in any way?
I don't have visibility of what those are. I'm just giving a number. I don't know, Shannon, or if they're, what are we buying?
Minor capital for open spaces. That, is there, is that potential acquisitions or is there anything we're purchasing?
Yeah, I think they're bringing to you purchases. Yeah, I, I think they're bringing to you purchases as they come up. So it's just anticipating that there could be. Purchases.
Uh, you know, this one, we don't want to go through garage. We talked about before, we're going to make that one change and. Once again, we'll keep our eye on the fund balance just to try to keep it at around ten million to tackle. All the, all the requirements going forward. And then IT is running relatively flat with regards to the assumptions. For what we are going to be taking in. From the departments and what the spend needs to be to support the town. Nothing, nothing major happening from an IT perspective. Facilities is really the same way. You know, the one thing that I would say on facilities, it can be. Quite variable on some of the expenses. I mean, it does show us going down. In our expenses for our projects, but. I, I, you know, I would say that that can fluctuate, that, that, that's how it sits here today. We'll see what happens over the next four or five years, but we do have a fun balance to absorb those if need be. Uh, so we're not risked there. On special projects. You know, creative arts, we basically grew it four percent a year. And the out years, that should be four percent. And our grants are running relatively, just, we're growing those as well at a minimal percentage. And then our break history, once again, is carried out based upon the capital. CIP that was submitted plus their operating expenses going forward. Uh, but we're maintaining a, a healthy fund balance in special projects based upon this. Marijuana, we talked about before that the revenue continues to go down. And so we're ending twenty twenty nine at two hundred ninety two thousand versus. Four hundred and eight thousand proposed in twenty five. And so that's also making the transfer to the childcare fund go down as well. Down to two hundred thousand, which is making the childcare fund. Fund balance reduce as well because there's not as much revenue coming in in the out years. Cemetery, we're just keeping our healthy, nothing major happening on a cemetery level. Uh, childcare, we just talked about the reduction of revenues coming from. The marijuana fund and also reduction of revenues from our investment income. So. You know, we were in the prior years, including the excise fund transfer, we were. Taking in two million a year, one point eight million to two million. That's going down to three hundred and twenty five grand. Um, in the, by the end of twenty nine, so. Um, and that's what's causing our fund balance to get almost to break even. So. You know, I think we would have discretionary if we needed to do any more transfers in the future. From excise, but that's, that's what it's looking like today. And then parking. Parking, there's really no major fluctuations on the revenue. We talked about that from the revenue assumptions perspective. Just the three percent growth and. Any transfers that we would need to have from the excise fund to support the, the capital projects that we do have for parking. As we mentioned, we're going to slice off some of the transfer at the end of twenty nine to cover. What they need, it's, they don't need a fund balance of seven point three million. So we'll get that adjusted back down about five million bucks. And on healthcare with our two percent growth of expenses, we're not really. Showing any changes in premiums coming through from our staffing, staffing's flat, premiums are flat. So we're leaving that alone for now. And the same thing, you know, nominal increases from that seventeen thousand five hundred Tracy talked about to. To the various departments to cover the healthcare cost. And we're just keeping our stop loss reimbursements consistent to what we have had in the past from an assumption perspective. And then total healthcare costs, we have it growing two percent a year. Uh, we'll see, hopefully we can keep it at that level. That being said, at that rate, we'll keep about a one million dollar balance. And this is a fund which is, I think, a good target to, to keep. And sustainability.
On the healthcare. Do, is the town insulated from escalating costs because it is self-funded?
I just think it helps manage risk. I mean Dana, I don't know if Dana's in here, but we work with Brown and Brown to. Try to keep the best plans and the best options available for our employees to minimize our costs. And that's a continuous basis with managing our healthcare spend. I'll, I'll turn it over to Dana.
Uh, yeah, that's a.
I'm sorry, I didn't need to bring you all the way down here.
We look at that all the time and evaluate to make sure the self-funded plan is our, the best value for what we, for what we need for our employees. And so far, our self-funded is a better option for us because we pay for. Our own costs instead of arbitrarily going with the market. So even, we are able to manage our own claims and costs. Instead of just eight percent across the market. So sometimes we'll have high years, but sometimes like. Twenty twenty five looks like it's going to be a low year and we get the benefit of that.
And then the, the stop losses, that insurance, do we contract with a third party? To, to kind of be that backstop on something that would be catastrophic?
Yes, so we pay up to eighty thousand dollars for every claim. So, and we monitor how many claims are getting close to that. And then our premiums are based on how many of our claims hit that eighty thousand and go above because. We pay a lot for stop loss, but they also need to balance how much we are costing in stop loss. But we buy that insurance. Um, in order to cover us so we don't have catastrophic claims. Once we hit eighty thousand, our stop loss kicks in and that's our own insurance. That's our kind of secondary insurance or protection, if you will. And we go to market every year for that to see who will give us the best rates.
Thank you.
Care costs from, coming from private, coming from nonprofit, our increases in percentage are really low.
That's why.
I mean, it's. It's like ten to fifteen percent.
Exactly.
So when I look at these, I, I, you know. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So we talked a little bit about the docking permits. We have three seventy five and twenty five and then it's just really fifty percent. Of our B to one oh six west in the future. So. We have six twenty five built in for our docking fee revenue. Well, we'll see how that shakes out, you know, as, as. As we talked about a little bit ago, but that's what's based in this, the assumption here. And then. Really outside of the capital projects under sustainability, uh, we're keeping the balance, the fund balance relatively. You know, right, right around nine hundred grand, eight to nine hundred grand, uh, going out into the future. We have a little bit of money in twenty four, but then it goes down. And staffing is staying relatively, well, this thing flat. And then our last fund is our accommodation unit compliance, you know. Twenty twenty three, we're at seven point two million when we. Put in the, the fee structure and now we'll be at six point six million in twenty nine based upon. License fees, reduct, excuse me, number of licenses, the fees are the same. Uh, no changes in fees on that perspective. And then we're still keeping the personnel. Uh, allocation the same first two point nine two. For this program and we're transferring out as much as we can into the workforce housing fund. So that's really an overview there. So roll it all up into KPIs. Green is good. So.
Well, then why do you have all this yellow on here?
See the green. I can't see either. So there you go. But. Uh, we have our cash to liabilities ratio and. We're slowly going from twenty twenty at five point nine to nine point one in twenty three. These numbers come from our act for. That's what we use to, to, as a source document for these KPIs. Um, our unrestricted fund balance. Um, and our goal there is no less than two months or, or one point six seven. And as we look here. We were dipping a little bit here in twenty twenty four to point four eight, but still green. And now we're back up to one point oh four. In our twenty twenty five budget. Um, our debt burden ratio. Which is a target of more than one from a KPI benchmark perspective. As you can tell, we are running well above that. Running around five to six and historically, and then we're down to five point two one and twenty five. Our operating margin, that one is a red. That's looking at our. Uh, government funds revenue, net of transfers minus total expenditures, net of transfers. Divided by total revenue. So we are running a little bit in the red there, but with all the projects that we have that. Uh, is understandable. And, and then our last one was our enterprise funds KPI. We talked about. The utility one for the covenant for. The water treatment plant on the utility fund. This is another enterprise one where we're looking at our net position. For the three enterprise funds, a utility golf and cemetery. And we want to be steady or constant of our net position over time. And that's what we're running. You know, one point oh eight, one point oh five, one point one and one point oh three and the green.
Will the red, will the red impact us at all?
No, no, we're okay.
That's just based on big capital expenditures.
Yeah, I've introduced a couple of more. One was a water covenant one. The other one was a hundred and thirty five million. That's the one I'm looking at more than anything else from a town per, perspective on cash flow.
That's it.
That's it. I think that we were planning a few minutes if you had any. Overall, question, overall questions. I will say, I think on, it's great for us to have the five year projection. I think it really helps you understand. Where we could end up going forward and to help make decisions about spending today. But I just, you know, remember it is based on assumptions, right? And we're really being very conservative with our revenue. And we're looking at five percent increases to expenses, which, you know, may or may not happen depending on which fund you're looking at. Or what expenses you're looking at. So it's a great tool. But don't get, you know, too, too worried about any individual fund. Because I think as Dave and I and with Tracy and Scott have talked about many times. You know, if you're looking out at twenty twenty nine and something looks like it's in a bad position. We aren't going to let it get there, right? Like you, you as a council are going to take action before that happens. So. It's good to look out and understand what that could potentially look like, but also keep in mind that a lot's going to change between now and twenty twenty nine.
And we're going to try to introduce projecting during the year, at least on a quarterly basis. To kind of do a snapshot. What Tracy provides you is how we're tracking to budget. Um, but we're not really providing you, how do we look like we're tracking? We only do a projection one time in July when we do the annual budget. But it'll kind of, as we get a feel for. Seeing what's going on. If there's anything we need to really call out that's not tracking, we want to keep our eye on that. Instead of just one time a year. So that's something we'll use as well, uh, whether it's revenue or cost.
Any overall questions?
We've got a very broad scale. How, how do you manage the investment income and all these reserves that, uh. And, and restrictions that are throughout these funds? What is, do you have a? Them tied up in five year plans or like?
We have Chandler management that we keep about eighty million in. That's our four, I look at that as our 401K. And sixty million of that's in zero to, zero to three. As far as when they mature and when they mature, they're reinvested back into that zero to three maturity. And that's based upon our.
Three months or?
Your three years, I'm sorry. And, um, and then, um, and then we have. A longer term, no. I'm going to say this wrong, Shannon. You give me a look. Um, I'm tired. I didn't sleep last night. A longer term of, of, of like, it's zero to one. Is there sixty million? And then we have one to three, we have twenty million, one to three. We're going to keep it in that realm. We could go up to five years. Which could give you more sustained growth of higher percentage. But when we were looking at our roll up back in September. Of our five year cash. I was like, we can't, we can't do that because we were. We were dipping into our Colorado Trust and we were dipping into First Bank and we were getting really. Uh, under our one thirty five KPI and we were at a point where. We don't want to really dip into our, call it our 401K. So, but I don't want to tie up any more cash. Of non-liquid cash. I, you know, we want to try to keep that fifty million liquidity, whether it's through First Bank or Colorado Trust. As best we can. And so both of those are. More tied to near term interest rates that are happening with the feds. And so we might not be able to make as much, but we'll have liquidity when we need it, if we need it. And we kind of stick on that fifty million dollar number we like to have. So it's really going to be going forward. It's really Colorado, Chandler, and we meet with Chandler. Once a quarter to go through how things are tracking with the economy, how things are tracking with our investments. And, and our main goal is really. To not. Create risk for the town in our investments. So we're ultra conservative, but then also make sure that we. We, uh, we don't tie up everything into. Uh, Chandler and then all of a sudden we come in and we have to take a sale at a loss. And then we, you know, it might not make sense from that perspective.
Thank you for the overview.
Anything else?
Just want to say a great job. I mean, this. This really helped, helped us. We feel well informed in making decisions. So I appreciate it.
Agreed. All right. Well, thank you guys very much. Do you want to take a twenty minute break before exec session or? Or fifteen minute break before we come in here and break for exec session?
I think so, right? Yeah. Okay. Okay. Want to do anything for five minutes before that or? We'll just come back in here.
It's probably not worth it five minutes. Yeah, maybe we, you guys take, you know, fifteen ish and come back here at four twenty five so that you can. Do what you need to do for us to move into.
Cause I have to read the executive session script and then we have to go another.
Need to be here four twenty five, no later.
I don't even know how that's worth it. The things we do.
No, that is not.
What I could tell, the funds we have to watch. No, it's up at the top.
Look at you anymore. I was going to start cracking up.
All right, we're back in the work session and I'm going to read the executive session motion. Town council go into executive session under CRS section twenty four six four oh two four B related to conferences with. Andrew Ringel. All. And Evans and the town attorney for purposes of receiving legal advice pertaining to dispute over land development by Gondola Properties LLC. Council member Page. Council member Sade.
Do I need a second?
Oh.
Second? No?
Motion second.
She moved a second.
Council member Page. Council member Sade.
Yes.
Council member Rankin.
Yes.
Council member Carlton. Council member Gerard.
Yes.
Council member Beckerman.
Yes.
Mayor Owens, yes. All right. I move that the town council go into executive session pursuant to CRS twenty four six four oh two four E. For the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations. Developing strategies for negotiations and or instructing negotiators concerning the potential acquisition of real property known as. Aspen Springs subdivision number two, lot two for open space purposes.
Second.
Council member Page, council member Sade.
Yes.
Council member Rankin.
Yes.
Council member Carlton. Council member Gerard.
Yes.
Council member Beckerman.
Yes.
Mayor Owens, yes. Motion three, I move that the town council go into executive session CRS twenty four six four oh two four E. For the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations. Developing strategies for negotiations and or instructing negotiators concerning a land exchange for workforce housing purposes.
Second.
Council member Paige, absent, council member Sade.
Yes.
Council member Rankin.
Yes.
Council member Carlton. Council member Gerard.
Yes.
Council member Beckerman.
Yes.
Mayor Owens, yes. We're going into executive session. The time, the time is now 5:43. Executive session is concluded. We're now reconvened in the regular session. If any town council member believes that any discussion in the executive session was inappropriate and not related to the topic and purpose of the executive session. Announced in the motion to go into executive session, please state your objections at this time. Hearing none, as mayor, I hereby attest that this recording reflects the actual discussion at the executive session. It's been made, it has been made to satisfy the recording requirements of the Colorado Open Meetings Law. I hereby request that the town clerk retain the record for a 90 day period. The council has discussed in executive session matters that were the subject of the motions to go into executive session. For sake of transparency, any final decision on the agreement, on an agreement to acquire open space, exchange land. Or respond to the development dispute will be made in consultation with the town attorney. Anything else, Carl?
I think that's good.
Okay. Thank you very much. We are now moving into planning commission decisions. Everything okay there? Great. Um, legis- legislative review. Employee generation ordinance, first reading. And just to clarify for everyone, this is pretty much the same ordinance that came last week. Um, with some updates and review. Um, so we're not discussing the 35% or anything further. It's just the tables and things that. Um, we've previously discussed, so make sure that we keep, keep it appropriately narrow. Julia, thank you.
Um, thank you, Mayor Town Council.
Yes.
Um, policy 24, employee generation was adopted in 2020. Um, this policy is part of one of our many policies, programs and practices that we do here at the town of Breckenridge. To address our workforce housing, um, yeah. Town and um, this policy specifically um. Requires businesses to provide a portion of new employees generated by new uh. Square footage in commercial businesses or um. An increase in intensity of use. Um, square footage. Um, if this policy was not in place, then um that responsibility would lie entirely to um the town. And um our other policies and programs. Um, the town at the time adopted this policy using the town of Vales Nexus study that was done in 2016. Um, due to um COVID impacts and um us not being able to have Breckenridge specific numbers at the time. Due to that, we have since done a Nexus study of our own that are Breckenridge specific business. Numbers and with EPS as the um. Company doing that for us and the, these numbers are reflected in this ordinance. Um, there are no changes to their study in the table that's reflected in the first reading. The other changes in here are regarding those numbers and in the calculations that exist in the code already. Um, that 35% mitigation rate that you see in there is not changing. That's existing in the code now. Um, the numbers that are changing are just the actual employee mitigation rate numbers. Um. And then also some corrections to the terminology of the um commercial language. Categories, um the removal of residential townhomes, which this policies doesn't apply to. And um, we removed from previous iteration that you saw. The definition of employee. So um, there are additional topics, as Kelly mentioned, that we'll be talking about later. That include the actual mitigation rate, small business exemptions, fee and lieu. And um the process challenge um of the numbers. So we'll be back before you for that and um we really just want to get this table corrected. Um, on the books to have the Breckner specific numbers in here. But if you have questions, I'm here.
Great summary, Julia. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question. Great. That was great summary. Um. Hey, Julia, once this passes and becomes and, you know, becomes part of the code. Um, how will previous precedent, you know? Be set in terms of, you know, because we, we're not going to have a process for. For people challenging this, so I'm assuming they'll just be able to challenge it and. You know, which has happened in the past, right? And there's precedent and. How does that precedent play with this change to the code? Does that change anything at all?
So there's a process already in place in the code, um which you, we've seen. Um, so right now this just changes that table number, so um. We would just proceed as normal. This will just replace those numbers. I don't think that there'll be as many um potential challenges. Um. Because these numbers should be more accurate to Breckenridge. Um, and based on the past challenges, they wouldn't. Um, apply now, they would fit this table. So um, it does do what we would like. So if we got a challenge right now before we make another modification to this policy, we take it through the same process. Um, does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
Dick, I think it's also important to note that Julia will be coming back. Um, with additional work session discussions to get it some of those others.
But I'm just thinking in the meantime.
Okay.
But I'm coming back even, I think it's next time. So I won't pause, I'm going, so you'll see.
And I agree with the urgency to get this table replaced, so I'm. The, the way we're doing the process, I'm in full agreement.
Steve?
This is data driven by Breckenridge statistics. And in fact, Dick, to answer your question about precedent, the precedent that we have, that it came up when I was on the planning commission. Wouldn't have had to come up because these tables solve that.
Yeah.
Just by. The way the precedent arose, it, it validated our current, these new tables.
Right. Nothing to add?
Okay.
I'm supportive.
Tonight, thank you, Julia. Next up, an ordinance approving a subordination agreement with First Bank for Staples Village Phase Two. First reading, but we have seen something similar before.
Uh, yes, uh, you did see um an agreement for phase one, but now that um they've moved on to phase two. They need to do a, another agreement that would have the correct property. Um, attached to the agreement as the collateral for the loan. And obviously, um, it, it's just a situation where the proceeds from the sales aren't coming in. Um, sufficient to cover the expenses, so the developer has to have the option. Um, to utilize some financing. It's interesting on the first phase financing. Um, First Bank approved 21 million and Suzanne really only needed about 5 million to get her through it. And we expect the same thing on this second phase, um, which is the loan amount of, I think it's about. 16 million, 15, nine, um, and that's for the last 24 homes, which will be the second phase.
Great. Questions, clarifications from Lori? Excited to see this move forward. Thank you, Lori. Looks like. Everybody's in agreement.
So mayor, for the um. Managers report, I would recommend as you, or agree with your recommendation that we do questions if you have them, but not have folks come down. Um, with one exception, which is we do need a response from you guys on your position on snow staying. But I also want to mention that um Shannon had included some traffic calming information and. I think if you want to have time to talk to her about that, we should push it off to the next meeting so that you have sufficient time for that. Is that something you all would like time to discuss with her or did you feel, yes, okay? All right, we'll plan for some time at the next meeting so that you have a um time to ask questions and get some feedback from her. Um, and then Matt, do you want to come down for snow staying?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, yeah, not, no other um updates in mobility, just uh your curious and your feedback for snow staying.
And the county, um, or I mean, the Vale, Vale resource is going to.
Yep.
Split with us.
Agreed to sign on at 50/50 again.
Okay, last year's total was 59,078 dollars. This year is 59,998 dollars, minimal increase. Is everyone supportive?
Thank you.
Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Incredible way to reduce highway miles.
And thank you very much for um negotiating to get that. I know you were, is that scaring you? I know you had to do some negotiating to make sure that that stayed on budget, so thanks for doing that.
Thank you.
Um, did you have any questions on the sustainability memo?
Uh, questions, sustainability? All right. Anything on the housing update?
We don't have housing or open space.
Okay.
So I think if you wanted to take the next 15 or 20 minutes or so, you could do your committee. Report outs and other matters.
I think that would be great. So do you want to do report of the town manager and staff or you want to just go through? Um, or?
The, we, just a couple of things for you. Um, planning wanted me to let you know that we have. Four applications for the planning commission to our incumbents to are not. Um, that closes on Thursday, so if you know anybody you think might be interested, please encourage them to apply. Um, there is a housing tour that Lori is uh leading, taking folks down to Denver on the 17th of October. Just interested to know if anyone would like to attend, just so she has good numbers.
Is that during the?
It's a full day. They'll probably leave around 8am. Kelly, we're away.
We're at cast.
Yeah.
I am also at, so.
You're away? No, Steve? No, no, okay. Another time.
Take some pictures.
And then I just wanted to point this out, having gone through the budget, that we, Scott and I and all of SLT are working on a new. Um, memo template for the packet. Um, and making sure, I mean, there's a lot of reasons why we want to do a new uh template for that and make sure that you guys have. All the information that you need on the things that we present to you. One of the sections of that memo will be around budget because we tend to some, you know, we tend to talk about the operational impacts of some of the decisions we make. And then we sort of lose sight of doing that. Um, and I think as we talked about adding new positions and adding. New operational vehicles and things like that, that's all tied to decisions that we've made. Um, in the past that maybe we didn't talk about, that eventually that is going to trigger the need for another body or the need for another vehicle. So we are working on that and I think we're rolling that out in November.
Yep, it's final draft.
Okay, so you'll see that coming in the next month or so. And that's all I have.
Great. Um, report of mayor and council members, cast MMC. So. I wanted to take the temperature. We had a very nice phone call from, um, I guess the Park City folks, Mountain Towns 2030.
Yeah, Mountain Towns 2030.
Um, and they are interested in coming back to Breckenridge or back to Summit County, I should say, um, next year. And, you know, we kind of talked about their reasoning's are, we just have the right sized facilities. We have um a lot of different things going on here. We can work across the county. To kind of show them, you know, a variety of different ways to approach things. So. I wanted to take the temperature of this group on if you're interested in hosting again.
And there is a, it's a, you know, $150,000 contribution for the host entity. But we got a really good response from the folks at MMC, so we think. That the other communities would be willing to participate in that cash piece.
Um, so we wouldn't be responsible for the full amount, but. Probably.
In the, and the conference is now over 500 attendees.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you know, it's a really great opportunity to bring 500 people to Breckenridge.
Yeah, we thought it was a valuable thing because we can plan it sort of strategically and not the busiest time of the year. And with numbers being flat, it seemed like something that we should, or down, we should be considering. And I think it's, you know, a good group of folks with sustainability and um hopefully. Bringing, using buses and transit and not all bringing their own cars and. Kind of an exciting group to have here, so. Thoughts, yes, no?
Yeah, I think.
Does the pond crossing on a knee bike?
Sounds scary.
Um, does the green team enjoy posting this about?
That's you, Matt, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it showcases all the places where we lead. Uh, in sustainability and we should do it.
We have a lot to show off.
We do.
Yep, our teams have been very busy. You do? All right, great.
Thank you.
I don't think I had anything else from MMC. It was a weird day. It was a weird day. All right, um. Open space.
We have a meeting. We haven't had a meeting, so we will have a meeting next week.
Break tourism?
Two weeks.
Um, we had a meeting, um. We. Reviewed financials. They looked great. We talked about presenting the budget to council, which has been done. Um. Marketing update, um, Lucy is really diving in hard on the data and um. And really quickly and, and um. Re- responding quite quickly and um formulating. New plans, bringing out, you know, really, she's very hands on, more so than I've seen in many years. So I'm, I'm very confident that she's gonna, she's gonna uh. Make the most of the situation.
Great.
So, uh, we talked about, we reviewed Oktoberfest, which I think. We got a report on that, didn't we? I can't remember. I've been in several meetings where we did. But it was, it was very, very successful. Um. Yeah, the net revenue was down a hair. Um, interesting, some of the data we got from the. You know, from the attaching the credit cards to the um, the average, average beer consumption was 2.7 per person. Which may be good, maybe not. Um, Sunday was busier than Friday, which anecdotally I would have never guessed, but. Um. It was a lot of destination guests and, and, and they tended to be older. Um, on the sustainability side. Um, they, or no, on the philanthropic side, we, we collected the, or um. Per collected 1,000 pounds of non perishable food. Um, at the event. And uh composting was extremely successful. So, uh, talked about snow sculpture coming up, great pool of candidates. Um, they got 34. Um, applicants, selected 10 international, two domestic. And um incredible quality of the, of the applicants this year, so. Um, exciting, looking forward to this, to snow sculpture.
Yes.
I think that was it.
Dick, did you get any indication on how successful the R cup was and how many were recovered? Like? How many were put out? How many, what percentage was?
That didn't come up. I wish I had thought to ask, Jay, but no, I don't know. But we can find out for sure.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dick. Uh, brick history. Thank you, Dick. Brick History?
No update or no meeting, yeah, Brick History says thanks for the support on the budget and the CIP and look forward to some good work.
Cool. Brick Creative Arts?
Met on September twenty-sixth, basically reviewed the budget. Everybody's very excited for the master plan study. And just looking forward to continuing the fundraising efforts. I think they'll be very grateful that we extended the budget for two years. As fundraising does rely on that reliability, consistency.
Great. Thanks, Steve. DMO?
We have a meeting next Friday.
Social Equity?
We haven't had a meeting, but I do want to highlight that Floor has been able to partner with Breck Film. To host the Hispanic Heritage Month event on next Monday, the fourteenth, from five-thirty to seven. At the Eclipse, they'll be playing Encanto in Spanish with English subtitles.
Fun, that's great. And all the flags are up now, which are gorgeous. Okay, Arts and Cultural Master Plan?
Josh and Amanda are excited to speak with all of you. If you haven't, please schedule your thirty or sixty minute appointment. They are back in Columbus, kind of bringing back all the data. And I am really just excited to see where that goes and kind of where their next check-in. I think will be really, really important to have a lot of eyes on that. To make sure that the direction is what we think the direction is and that the. Anticipation of all the different fields that are to be addressed are being done in a way that will be useful for us to, in our community. So I'm really excited about the community engagement, about kind of the, the route there that I take on forming. Taking all of that engagement and pressing into something that can actually lead to some recommendations, so, to be determined.
All right, other matters, anyone have anything? Share with the group. No, all right, I have one. I have been listening in to a lot of other budgeting meetings, both in our community and some elsewhere. And I just wanted to take the chance to thank our staff is so unbelievably prepared. And the depth of knowledge that you guys have is really exceptional. And I always appreciated it, but I'm amazed at the, when I compare with. You know, the question, there are just no questions that you guys can't answer and give us a lot of background information. It just makes our jobs so much easier and really happy to have everybody who's been participating in that process. So thank you.
Second.
All right, should we vote on it? No? All eyes. All right, anything else? Okay. Meeting adjourned. Seven o'clock, I'm going to call the Town Council regular meeting for Tuesday, October eighth to order. Roll call, please, Helen.
Hey, Marika Page, absent. Dick Carlton. Steve Gerard.
Here.
Carol Sade.
Here.
Jay Beckerman. Todd Rankin. Mayor Kelly Owens.
Here.
Approval of the minutes, Town Council minutes, September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four. Any changes? Minutes stand, approval of the agenda.
Any changes?
No changes. All right, the agenda stands, communications to council. Now is the time for public comment, this is non-agenda items only, there will be a three-minute time limit. Please come on forward if you'd like to.
I'm Barbara Swider. I've been a.
I've been an owner in the Forest House condos on High Street for thirty-four years. The HOA has just gone through a difficult time to get insurance for the twenty-six unit, fifty-two-year-old building. American Family Insurance gave notice their policy would not be renewed in October. They have insured Forest House since two thousand and six without any claims. The premium for last year was thirty-nine thousand dollars, we had fifty thousand dollars in the budget for this year. Alpine Meadows Management Company worked from June with one broker and finally was able to get a quote from another broker. For coverage for, by three companies for the premium of two hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars. With a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar deductible for the replacement cost of fourteen point six million. The wildfire score for Forest House is ninety-six out of a hundred. Because of the trees on the hill across the street, up behind the other condos. On the other side of the school, it is much lower, I don't have that number. The HOA board is going to have to finance at ten percent for now. And is doing a special assessment for future payments. An assessment was in the works for a new boiler, but that has taken, this has taken over precedence. There is a chance in three to six months that additional options for deductible will be available. If owners add loss assessment to coverage to their policies. I know insurance has come before the council and the state has started an investigation that won't be known until twenty-twenty-six. This is a burden for all owners, but especially for those who purchased a unit in the last couple of years. The Town of Breckenridge is giving a lot of help to obtain housing. I don't know if there's any help for those who are having, who have their housing and are now being hit with expenses not planned for. They're a local workforce and they've invested in their dream homes in Breck. To live and work and become active in this community. I don't know if just putting out any help that could be available. I do have a letter that's going out to the homeowners if you want that for your reference.
That would be great, if you don't mind bringing it down. Was your name Barbara?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We will definitely have someone from staff just get with you and talk about the issue. Thank you very much for providing your contact information here. And then I did want to encourage you, there's a Division of Insurance Town Hall. Okay, great. Great. Good, okay, well, thank you very much for your comment. And we absolutely know that this is an issue that we'll be paying attention to. And we'll encourage staff to learn what they can about your specific issue as well. Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Moving on to new business, we have no continued business. So we're on Council Bill number twenty-four, series twenty-twenty-four, a bill for an ordinance amending policy twenty-four A, social community. Regarding employee generation.
Thank you, Mayor and Town Council. If adopted this evening at first reading, or if approved at first reading. This bill will approve a change to policy twenty-four. Regarding employee generation, it will change the land use categories in policy twenty-four. To mimic those in policy nine dash one dash five. Removing residential from the policy twenty-four. And also categorizing it with the same terminology with the commercial uses found in our definitions of nine-one-five. It will also adopt the table that EPS from out of Denver did for an employee generation Nexus Study for us. And those are Breckenridge specific numbers that will replace what is currently in the code. And which are Veil numbers done in two thousand and sixteen. Lastly, the change will incorporate a. Example, the example calculation in the policy to mimic the employee generation numbers. That will be adopted in the table in the policy as well. That's all I have, if you have any questions.
Any questions for Julia? All right, any comments from the public on Council Bill number twenty-four, series twenty-twenty-four? Seeing none, public comment is closed, can I have a motion?
I move that we pass Council Bill number twenty-four, series twenty-twenty-four. The title of which has been read into the record.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Helen.
And I just want to note that Marika did join at seven oh two, it was like a minute after we did our roll call.
Great, thank you very much.
So she's on for this. Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Page. Hopefully. Make sure she can talk, she can talk. If not, it's no big deal. Okay. All right. We're going to go to Councilmember Sade, Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. All right, Council Bill number twenty-five, series twenty-twenty-four, a bill for an ordinance approving a subordination agreement with First Bank pertaining to Staples Village Home LLC. Homes LLC financing for the Staples Village project, Lori.
Yes, this is first reading of a bill that if approved would authorize the town to enter into a subordination agreement. With Staples Village LLC that will facilitate their financing at the Staples Village neighborhood. This is similar to a agreement we entered into for the first phase of this development. And now we are moving on to the second phase. So really the only difference is in the legal description of the property that is subject to the subordination agreement. We recommend approval on first reading.
Thank you, Lori. Any questions for Lori? Any comments from the public on Council Bill number twenty-five? Seeing none, public comment is closed, can I have a motion?
I move that we pass Council Bill number twenty-five, series twenty-twenty-four, the title of which was read into the record.
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call, please, Helen.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. All right. Planning matters, Planning Commission decisions? Any call-ups? No. All right. Decision stand and we've, anything else Shannon for report of town manager and staff? All right, all we have then is scheduled meetings, see the schedule and meeting adjourned.